All right. Good evening. I see a lot of new faces here tonight, so welcome to the Placerville City Council meeting. It's 5:00 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and get started. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, Ms. O'Connell?
Councilmember Barelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. It is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville declaring August 2nd, 2022 as National Night Out. And I'll go ahead and read this, and then Sergeant Pratt is here to receive this proclamation at the end. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide lights-on campaign in celebration against crime, drug, and violence on August 2nd, 2022 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 39th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the City of Placerville to join forces with 38 million people and over 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City Council plays a vital role in assisting the Placerville Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Placerville and is supporting National Night Out 2022 locally. And it is essential that all citizens of the City of Placerville be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impacts that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Placerville. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and camaraderie are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore, I, Cara Taylor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Placerville, State of California, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, as National Night Out in the City of Placerville, and urge all citizens of the City of Placerville to join the Placerville Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch, and their sponsors in supporting the 39th Annual National Night Out on August 2nd, 2022. I'd like to invite Sergeant Pratt up, and would you like to say any words?
I'll say it. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. National Night Out is a tradition that the Police Department has been involved in for many, many years, back to when I was a cadet, back in the late '90s. I do want to thank our one coordinator that showed up today, Ms. French, and others are obviously busy trying to get ready for the event, so just encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the night and meet your neighbors.
Thanks. And I'll walk over to you, and Rebecca can take a picture.
And I do want to acknowledge Sergeant Pratt's efforts in this endeavor. He's doing a heavy lift for both the Police Department and the community by coordinating these events, so thank him when you see him out there running around sweaty.
That is a big job, and I know it is. We appreciate it.
At this point, I'd like to open it up to members of the public who may wish to speak on this item.
Not yet, David.
Yeah, yeah.
He's not going to talk about National Night Out.
He can't.
He doesn't want to. He told me he was going to talk about the Fire Council, so...
It's everybody but David.
I am. I'm going to talk about the Fire Safe Council. It's been ordered by Aaron to show up. That's it.
David, you can talk forever. It's all right. But three minutes on each subject.
Thank you, David. And we'll look forward to seeing the Fire Safe Council at National Night Out. Are there any comments from the council members?
Well, happy start to say something, but I know that the Police Department goes into a significant amount of effort to get this done and to help bring our neighbors together. Seriously, it's one of the few times I think neighbors sometimes see each other, and it's really, you know, we're so focused on everything else nowadays that this opportunity to get together as neighbors, I know that I've visited quite a few different communities, little small neighborhoods, and had great conversations with people, and I look forward to doing it again.
Yeah, likewise. It's always great conversations. You know, you've got to pace yourself on food because you're going to go to more than one spot, so you've got to, you know, understand that. And looking forward, I always have great conversations. I mean, they're always good, but the cymbalic neighborhood always raises the bar, so I'm challenging everybody else as well.
Well, I hope this year we don't have a lead-in like we did last year. Remember? We had the big fire up on...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Tim, I'm sure you're hoping for the same.
That was exciting. Yeah. All right. We will move on to item four, Closed Session Report. We had no closed session tonight, so there's nothing to report. And item five, Adoption of the Agenda?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Announcements and presentations to the public. This is item 6.1, Brief Comments by the City Council. And let's start with Patty Barelli.
I don't have any comments.
No comments? All right. Dennis?
So I was listening in on the Board of Supervisors meeting last week, previous one, and item 26, put on by the Environmental Management Department, they had... Just dug on it. Just one second there. I lost my spot. Not environmental. Oh, no. Bear with me, because I have it right here. Okay. The Building Department, the Planning and Building Department of Economic... I knew that sounded funny when I read it last time. "Receiving File Presentation by Economic Forensics and Analytics on a Regional Assessment of El Dorado County and Sacramento Metro Area Economies, Including Occupational Changes, How Things Have Been Changing Within the County, and a Lot of It Is Relevant to the City, Where People Are Moving From and Going To, Why They Are Doing That, The Various Jobs That Are In Where People Are Migrating, Working From Home, The Needs of Communities For These Types of Positions." It'll lead into some of the things that we'll probably talk about this evening, but I would encourage everybody here up on the council and anybody that's interested in this kind of stuff. I get kind of geeked out because you had a ton of graphs, a ton of information. It's item number 27, and it's on 11:00 a.m. at a time certain for the El Dorado County Board of Supervisors' last meeting. It's worth a see if you have any interest in the economy and what's going on and where we're headed.
So is that a week ago meeting?
Yes. June 21st.
21st?
Yes, June 21st.
Thank you.
And this is a professor. He goes around and gives his speech, and he has a... It's just chock full of all sorts of great information. And I think there's, and I think he's, his, what do you call them? His slides are available online as well, so it's worth a look. I met with Mark Egbert today. He's going to be, just on a side thing, because he's going to be moving towards... No, he's going to be helping out the Cal Cities in doing a presentation to the League of California Cities Meeting that's going on in Tahoe in a couple weeks. And so I asked him to present there, and he said he'd be happy to. What a great resource he is to this community. And he also, he shared some interesting news with me about the funding sources that are coming up and the things that are going on. It's pretty amazing how many things are coming together right now for vegetation management, resiliency, and what the county's doing, and how all the different agencies are starting to gel and work together. I'm really excited about where that's going. It's not just us. It's everybody that's working on this now. So it's getting a lot of attention locally and nationally.
That's the way it should be, don't you, Bruce?
Well, it should be. Yes, absolutely. So, thank you very much, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Great comments. Jackie? And Michael?
Yes. I just wanted to remind Placerville that come July 1st, we'll be starting the organic waste in our beautiful yard waste. So we'll all be throwing, and things I wasn't aware of, that paper cups, paper plates, wax cardboard, paper takeout containers, wax paper, napkins, these are all things that can go now into your yard waste, basically as in addition to the yard waste that we used to put in there. I will be very interested to see as the months pass by, what people think about two weeks of food sitting in their yard waste as we move forward. I know every city's taking different steps with this, and, you know, we're going to do biweekly, but I'll be looking for feedback as I talk to folks, because I know my ick factor will be high, you know, having shellfish in my trash for two weeks. So I told Dennis I was going to come, you know, put him in his trash across the way. But just as a reminder, I know this went out in people's mail. They should have got it from El Dorado disposal, and there's been some stuff on social media, but I still think there's going to have to be a lot more education done for people to kind of catch on to it, and, you know, hopefully, because we've got to meet our numbers, our diversion numbers. So we'll see where that goes. And besides that, you know, I got a few meetings and emails on short-term rentals, so I'll talk about that more when that comes up, but had some good conversations around that as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. I met with the PDA President, Sue Taylor, and we had a really good discussion, and it kind of brainstormed ways that we could maybe strive for a more collaborative relationship with the PDA. So we'll see, you know, what can happen there. And I also really enjoyed going to the county fair and participating in the ribbon-cutting ceremony. It's just, you know, after the pandemic and years off of community events, it's really great to see people going to these community events again and coming together. So that was a lot of fun. We will now move on to item seven. This is the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion or by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. I would like to poll item 7.8. This is the ordinance of the City Council regarding the fiber utility, and this was a request by one of our service providers, Comcast, if the council is okay with that. And I would also like to highlight one thing. I don't need to poll it. I just want to highlight on 7.9, there is this legislation, AB 2237, that is working its way through the legislature, and it's pretty alarming. What it could potentially do is make it very difficult for us to use our local funds that were voter-approved to maintain our roads for road projects. So we're going to, you know, assuming that the council agrees to pass that resolution, we're going to be sending a letter in opposition, but I do think that it's worth highlighting.
It definitely is. So it got killed in committee, but it got sent to Rules Committee, and now it's back in Transportation Committee, so the letter's still very relevant.
So I spoke with Woody at Transportation, and he has already sent a letter in too, so just wanted to let you know. And Cara, I'd like to highlight 7.10, just to remind folks that there's going to be the fireworks. Maybe you have this in. If you did, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Adopt a resolution approving the fireworks display at the county fairgrounds for the Fourth of July. Everybody's just cracking down on fireworks, and they put on a wonderful free display, and everybody needs to watch the fireworks there.
All right. Thank you, Patty. Okay, so with that, I'm going to open the Consent Calendar up to public comment. So if anybody at this time would like to speak on items, let's see here, 7.1 through 7.10, but not 7.8 because we'll poll that for discussion later, please step up to the podium.
Hi. Sue Rodman, resident and Measure H and L Committee Member. And I would like to comment on 7.9, your letter. And I think that state legislature bill, AB 2237, would impede communities from caring for their own infrastructure, and it's a direct infringement upon citizens' rights to maintain their own communities. Measure H and Measure L have provided funds that have resulted in major improvements in Placerville's water, reduced our over 25% leakage rate to under 15%, I believe, and repaired and replaced leaking and substandard sewer lines, and put pavement where our roads were in sad shape. The state did none of this. The state is great to give unfounded mandates, but not to supply funding to carry those mandates out. AB 2237 would shut down even Measure H and L funding. So our answer to this one should be no, no, no. Go away. Do not do this. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Seeing no one else stepping up to the podium, I'll close public comment on the Consent Calendar and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move Consent Calendar minus 7.8.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Regina, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Saragosa. Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to item eight. This is the public comment period of our meeting. This is the time where anybody can speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. We ask that you step up to the podium, state your name voluntarily for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you would like staff or council members to respond back to you outside of the meeting, there's cards on the back table that you can leave your contact information and hand it to Regina, our city clerk up here. So with that, I will open this up to public comment. Please step up to the podium if you wish to speak.
Hi. I'm David Zelensky. I'm afraid you already know that. Anyway, thank you very much for keeping the Placerville Fire Safe Council on the budget. I've been instructed by my adult supervisor to show up, and I don't even know how to behave. So thank you very much. My friend Sue Rodman on the Fire Safe Council has already instructed me in how to spend some of it, so that's good, and we're making progress on that. There does seem to be a number of concerns in the Lyons Park, Shawn Drive, that side of the community, which is an area of danger should there be a fire coming from Weber Creek. And so what I'd like to do is, anyone who can help me, organize a chipping party. The El Dorado County Fire Safe Council has like $900,000 for chipping. I think it shows up like $25,000 a month or something for three years. And so that'd be a good time to get all the neighbors organized, get your chipping material out on the street, and have the chipper come by. So we'll have to figure out how to have a chipping party. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Kirk, so they probably don't have to mention anything about fire, but on the way down, I noticed that there's a fire now about 15 acres or so to the south of Coloma, and then up in the mountains, the snowpack is gone. So those who told you that global warming is a hoax is nonsense, or lakes are getting down to very, very low, record lows. So it's something to be conscious about for fire. It's now 13 months a year is a fire season we've got, and this isn't even July. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Good afternoon, Mayor Taylor and Councilmembers. My name is Sean Reese, and I'm a field representative from the NorCal Carpenters Union. I'm going to talk to you about the multiple-affording housing project, such as Armory Affordable Housing Project. First and foremost, since I'm a working father of two young children, I would like to know if the contractors that build these projects will be providing health care to their workers. Health care is something that is vitally important to my standard of living, not just for me, but for my family. The risks of working without it are too detrimental to our future. Secondly, will the contractors be paying area-standard wages on these projects and any projects moving forward? As you know, post-COVID, our costs of living have dramatically risen, gas prices being the most noticeable. That increases the difficulty of paying our bills and getting to work. Paying area-standard wages is vital for my family and my coworker's family in this current economic climate. Thirdly, will you be mandating these jobs to the local workforce? As I mentioned, gas prices. We would like to know that the surrounding local communities will be the workforce building said communities. These local projects matter, and our local hires matter. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. My name is Matt Kelly. I am also a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union. One of the areas that I cover is El Dorado County, so I'm paying attention to entitlement meetings and things like that. And one of the things that I have noticed is that I've seen a number of affordable housing projects popping up in Placerville, and I just want to speak to ones currently going through and future ones that there will be. We all live here in California. I think we understand how expensive it is to live here, so I think everybody can agree that affordable housing is very important. The one problem that I have is on a lot of the affordable projects I build, not necessarily here, but all around, I find something that's nearly criminal happening. The men and women on these jobs are being paid such low wages that they can only afford to live in affordable housing. And I just don't think the people building these projects and building this great country really deserve that. If it's not for them, we don't have this building we're sitting in. We don't have the houses we go home to, the banks we walk into, the grocery stores that we shop at. And I don't know all the power that you guys have, but I imagine that there's something you can do to put some stipulations in place that make sure that these things don't happen. Contractors come in, they undercut workers' wages so they can make their money, and it all falls and hurts the workers, the people spending money in these communities, the people that live here. You can do things, I believe, like make sure that they have to pay the area carpers' standards and wages, make sure that they're paying full health benefits so people don't have to worry about that. I mean, healthcare costs are insane if you don't have health coverage. Another thing, you have new people coming in that are from the community just starting in the trade. If it's contractors that participate in a joint apprenticeship program, that's going to give these people a leg up in the future. It's going to teach them a skill that can give them a long-lasting, successful career. Let's see, what else? And like Sean had said, also, local hire is a big thing. I know a lot of people that are having to drive hours to work on a construction project and grabbing, or driving by many on their way to wherever they're going. If you hire locally, people are saving money on gas, which costs a lot, and it's keeping money in the community. So not only you as a council can do a great thing by building this affordable housing for those who need it, you can do a good thing by putting stipulations in place that make sure the men and women working on these projects are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right. I see no more stepping up for public comments, so we will close oral communications and move on to written communication. Regina, do we have any written communications?
No, we do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay. You know, one kind of interesting observation that I've noticed post-COVID is that we used to get a lot of written communication before the meetings went to Zoom, and then since we've come back, we don't really get any anymore. So I just want to let the public know that you can email the council on any agenda item ahead of a meeting, and we do read it if you're unable to come to the meeting, but you do want to be able to make your comments known. Please feel free to email the council, and we do read them and appreciate it.
Mayor, I just want to mention, there were a couple of written comments received, but they're directly related to those agenda items, and those are attached to the agenda items, so they're not separate from those. So...
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you to everyone that came and spoke tonight. I appreciate that. We will move on to item nine. This is the item polled from the Consent Calendar, which is 7.8. And Mr. Morris has a support.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, this is the second reading of this ordinance, which would establish a fiber utility in the City of Placerville. I can go into as much detail or as little as you would like on this that I did from the last meeting. Basically, this would provide the opportunity for us to start our own fiber utility in the City of Placerville. This does not require that. It does not set those wheels really in motion. There's a lot of work still needs to be done in terms of figuring out exactly how we're going to do it, exactly how we're going to finance it, and how we move forward with it in the next several months. But this puts the guidelines in place to establish how we would do that, and that's the sole purpose of that at this time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this.
Are there any questions for Cleve? So just to, just for clarification, basically, what the city is planning with this utility, public utility, is that the city will provide infrastructure for fiber, and then other service providers like Comcast or AT&amp;T or smaller independent service providers as well will all be able to offer their services through the city's infrastructure.
That's correct. As you recall, in our broadband master plan that we adopted, we recommended and approved an open access system, which basically means we put the infrastructure in the ground, and then it's open, within reason, or there'll be some rules of how you participate, but open access for internet service providers and perhaps other providers to use that fiber to provide their services. So...
Okay. And any existing investments that service providers have made in town will still be theirs to you.
Correct.
Okay. With that, I will open this up to the public. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this?
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council. My name is Philip Arndt. I'm Director of Government Affairs for Comcast. And first, I want to thank City Manager Morris. A couple weeks ago, he mentioned to the council that Comcast had found out in the afternoon about the agenda item. I wasn't able to make it to the meeting, and he was kind enough to relay that to others and also point out that we wanted just to have the opportunity to respond to the item. I believe you received a letter from me yesterday that was included, and so simply, and it doesn't go so much into the details of the ordinance. I think it's more what the step of this ordinance takes, which is still a significant one in the sense that it sets up a funding mechanism and puts the city one more step down the road to, you know, to potentially doing a pilot project or a citywide broadband build, which, you know, based on just, you know, experience and what we know about, you know, city-owned broadbands, they are, there's some risk involved, a lot of risk involved, and other consequences. So we wanted just to, in a short, one-page-plus letter, just point out that, but also, you know, to say that, you know, we would like to, you know, meet with the city. I've met with Mr. Morris and a couple members of the council, but really open up the discussions. Comcast has been in the business for almost 60 years, so we know a little about building a system, maintaining a system, what goes into it. You know, I can tell you just last week, there was a car that hit one of our boxes that contained some major fiber and took down our fiber for a good number of hours, and it just, the crews involved, working diligently to get that up and get service going, was really incredible, and we were able to get it up in a few hours by the afternoon. Those are just some of the things. We're looking to constantly, you know, take our system and build on it for the future. So these are everything that we, these are the items that we like to talk about with the city as you go down this journey. And so that was what the letter was about. I wanted to see if there was any questions or anything that I can answer, but, you know, number one, just introduce myself with Comcast. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Appreciate it. Thank you, Philip. Appreciate it. Are there any questions for Comcast at this point? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cleve, nothing, you know, we can take this action, and that doesn't prevent us from sitting down with Comcast and hearing their concerns and any ideas that they have for collaboration and working that into, you know, the strategic plan going forward.
Not at all. Yeah, you still have the right to meet with them. And maybe there is something that comes up that works within the ordinance and our strategic plan that we can use that collaboration.
Okay. Great.
Mayor, I also want to mention we do have our consultant, Entry Point Jeff Christensen and Tyler Riblet. Right, Tyler? With us tonight. I've been meeting with them throughout the day, and they're here. If you have any questions or comments you'd like them to answer also.
Thank you. Are there any other, are there any questions for Entry Point at this point? Okay. And I just realized that I have not closed public comment officially yet. So last chance if anyone would like to speak on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Real quick, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I already forgot your name. You mentioned about handling emergency. You don't have to get up, but I just, so it brought to mind, since we have a representative from the other company, about how they would handle, I mean, are they equipped as Comcast is claiming to be?
Entry Points are consultants for the strategic plan. Yeah, I don't think we're.
So we would own our own facility. At least, that's the thought so far going forward, is we would own our own facility. We would be responsible for any repairs and maintenance on it.
So we would, okay.
Just like our water system, but?
But right now, we don't have that on our staff. We don't have that person, I don't think.
That would be something we would build out.
So that's what led me to start thinking, and when you mentioned that, and I thought, oh, okay, so how do we?
No, that's definitely under discussion, how we're going to handle that. I will say, hasn't been decided. We have the option of contracting that service out or hiring our own staff to do it. I anticipate possibly that we will contract out to start with, but that hasn't been fully determined yet. That's part of the process we're going through right now to make all those arrangements and see where we're at.
And I think he raises some reasonable questions that we should consider as we move forward through this. You know, some of these bigger players may want to reevaluate their, how they operate in our community and find a better way to partner with us, and whether that is meaningful to them or not. But, you know, when we start talking about this, they start going, wait a minute. And I understand. I would probably do the same thing if I was in Comcast's shoes. And, but I'm curious to see what that wait a minute sounds like, because it's more than just, hopefully, it would be more than just, wait a minute, we're going to charge you the same and give you the same service, but we're really good at it. So I think it's important to understand that.
Along those lines, and because I don't really understand this like I probably should, but Comcast, is my understanding, when the power goes out right now, people that are on Comcast lose their internet and their TV and everything. So is this different? Would this be a different situation?
It would depend on how we invest in it. It's up to us.
So that's why all the questions I have, you know.
There are still questions that we need to answer in terms of how it's going to work. We're still working through those, but I do feel that we will get those answered. We have had discussions along that line. I will jump back to, Dennis, can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
He has mentioned that when power goes down at his place, his fiber goes down. He currently has fiber. But as soon as he hooks up his generator and fires it back up, his fiber comes right back up. So he has internet access at that time. Is that correct, the way you described it to me?
Yes, the fiber coming into my building stays hot.
Hot, right.
And as long as I have some other source of electricity, everything starts working.
Right.
So there's differences in how those go. But there are, you know, there's backup and et cetera that we'll have to be aware of and put in place to make everything work right.
Okay.
More questions to come.
Yeah, I don't have more questions. I just want to let Comcast and everyone know we're open to the conversation. You know, I don't see a reason to halt moving forward. It doesn't preclude any conversations or agreements in the future, but, yeah, we're open to hear everything.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's important to note that one of the reasons we're doing this is that the cost of internet access is so high, and it gets throttled back when the opportunity exists for all these providers to provide at a much higher speed rates than they do, and yet we get throttled back. And there's a lot of people in our community that could use more bandwidth. There's, at the same price or cheaper. And this program that we're looking at, at least, at least the first analysis is that it'll cost our community a lot less to get a higher rate of bandwidth and similar service. And so that's, you know, that's really, that's really the attractive factor by a substantial amount in some cases. So it is, you know.
But it's going to be limited for, I mean, it's not that it's going to cover the whole town. I mean, they're going to have to do certain areas. I mean, my understanding is that we've still got people just right outside of our city limits or just near ours, that they don't even have, they're still on dial-up, you know. So that's why I don't understand this whole thing, so.
I think it's just a step in the next, for everyone getting it. I mean, we've wanted it for a really long time. We're in the city limits, and there's, you know, no sights on that. But this brings the conversation, talks about the infrastructure and starts moving us forward so that everyone can get there.
Yeah, we would hope so, huh?
Yep.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move 7.8.
Okay.
Second.
All right, first and a second, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Nell.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, so we are moving on to item 10.1. This item is in regards to short-term rentals, and Mr. Rivas has this report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This was a request by the city council through a resolution of intent to amend the code, requesting that the Planning Commission consider amendments to Title 10, which is the zoning ordinance of the city code regarding definitions of the types of commercial lodging facilities, including the regulation of short-term rentals, and to allow for transient short-term rentals within the commercial zone, the highway commercial zone, and the central business district zone. The recommended zone tax amendments will affect those properties that are zoned, CBD, C, and HWC. MAP exhibits are contained in your staff report. Generally speaking, we have the western portion of Placerville, which is commercial. We have the central portion of Placerville, mainly central business district, and then a lot of the eastern portion, which is highway commercial. All three commercial zones do allow for motels and hotels as a matter of right. The Planning Commission considered staff's first draft ordinance on May 17th of this year. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the commission did provide staff with direction on basically four modifications to be included in the ordinance that brought back to the Planning Commission. One, that the Planning Commission wanted to see a requirement that the responsible person or representative be available 24/7 and could be on-site within an hour. That provision was added to Section E2. A second request was that the ordinance include requirements for the host to post information for guests on high fire hazard risk areas and how to sign up for the El Dorado County Code Red. And that provision was added in subsection E6. A third requirement request was that the fire official is to be present for the annual inspections of the units to make sure defensible space ordinance is being maintained. That section was added to subsection 20D. And then the fourth item is not to allow conversion of new mixed-use developments in commercial zones to be used for short-term rentals. Staff added a restriction that was added to Section 1-4-20C. This restriction would be consistent with the intent of the mixed-use provisions that were added to the commercial zone districts pursuant to ordinance number 1667, which was adopted by the city council on October 28th of 2014. The purpose of that ordinance was to promote the development of employee housing and implement the housing element, which is cycle five or past element cycle, program six, which was to facilitate housing for employees in accordance with the state Employee Housing Act. And lastly, this was something that staff added in. An additional modification was made by staff when questions came up during the May 17th Planning Commission meeting, our last regarding code sections within the residential single-family zone districts that allows for, and I'm quoting this out of the codes, "the renting of not more than one room." And this question comes up a lot, and it's been very confusing to staff, the public, the commission, and council alike. So staff explained that this is an archaic section of the code when jurisdictions would regulate and restrict the use of single-family dwelling units to families. The city can no longer define what a family is, and nothing would prohibit somebody from renting a room or several rooms to unrelated roommates. The Planning Commission recommends deleting this section from the single-family residential zones as being unenforceable. So those provisions have been stricken from the residential zones. Has no real change, really, other than it's an unenforceable relic from, probably was forgotten when the code was first adopted. So in conclusion, short-term rental use for transient accommodations within the central business district, the commercial and the highway commercial zone districts may be considered commercial lodging facilities, but not defined as a hotel or motel use as currently defined by the zoning code. Short-term rentals are similar to the transient nature of an accommodation provided in a hotel or motel, albeit at a reduced scale, five or less individual units. Close regulation of this type of lodging facility does require more defined regulation, since these facilities typically do not have onsite management and can become a nuisance if inconsistent guests, and I just use the term "usi," run amok. The permitting process through the recommended short-term rental permits will allow for a more clear set of operational standards. An annual renewal process would also allow for a review of the facility annually. Non-renewal of a short-term rental determined to be a nuisance to the community would be easily implemented. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council introduce, waive the first reading of an ordinance, amending Title 10, which is the city's zoning ordinance, regarding the definitions of types of commercial lodging facilities, including the regulation of short-term rentals, and allow for transient short-term rentals within the commercial zone district, the highway commercial zone district, and the central business district as recommended by the Planning Commission. And that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer your questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions from the council?
I have one. How does this affect, so there's currently, there's potentially some non-compliant. And I know the city is actually dealing with one non-compliant rent, what do we call it, a short-term rental property in the city of Placerville right now. Currently, it is not within our code to allow people to rent their homes in the city in residential areas.
That is correct.
That is correct. And so people that are currently doing that are subject to enforcement if we were to choose to do that. Will, in doing this, do we anticipate becoming more aggressive in our enforcement actions on these homes, or?
We're currently taking enforcement of any short-term rentals in a residential zone. And we don't intend on really putting more effort toward it, other than when they're brought to our attention. We do enforce against it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a clarification as well, since we brought up an area outside is, this is strictly on these zones here, the commercial, the highway, and the business district. And I know we had, when this, this all sprang up really from a Planning Commission appeal on a specific project that started this process rolling. And I know when we, the last time we discussed this was, we were going to kind of, quote-unquote, do a short-term fix, if you will, for, pun intended, to deal with a portion of this and then come back and have a more overarching short-term rental conversation. So I'm still under the assumption that this isn't the end of this discussion, but the beginning, because we're still going to come back and do residential short-term rental. And I bring it up because, you know, ignoring it is sort of like saying, you know, we're just going to, I mean, they're not going anywhere, Airbnbs or VRBOs or anything else. It's sort of the modern-day version of what we would consider a bed and breakfast. It's why there's only one bed and breakfast left in town anymore. It's not, it's just, it's a, it's a way of renting that's just not in vogue as it used to be. I know I certainly enjoy using Airbnbs, because if you get a family together, you can all still hang out and not have to go back to your individual rooms if you want to do that at a hotel. So I just wanted to level-set that, because this is just talking about these specific ones, but I do intend to come back, I like for us to come back for a citywide one as well. That's realistic, because, you know, in the county, you just have a 500-foot buffer, and then there's some other rules as well. But we would be like this little microcosm in the middle of the entire county that didn't have an actual one that would allow it in residential neighborhoods as well. And just before anyone says, we're not South Lake Tahoe. Unless we have a giant earthquake and this beautiful, big lake opens up next to us or the Pacific Ocean encroaches on our doorstep, we're not going to have the hundreds of SRTs that are, or short-term, STRs that are coming into those areas. So I just want us to be pragmatic about how we look at it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Pierre, I've got a couple of questions. So from the staff report, it looks like there's about 70 units, housing units, within these three business districts. Do you know how many of those are non-conforming homes versus the residential units that were constructed pursuant to the mixed-use provisions versus kind of old-school mixed-use? That were just mixed-use from, you know, the 1800s or?
Yeah, unfortunately, staff does not have that information. So I can't tell you exactly how many are mixed-use within a commercial building versus the individual, single-family home that happens to be on a lot that was subsequently zoned to one of these three commercial zones.
Okay. And then with how this ordinance is written currently, if somebody came to the city and said, I want to build short-term rentals on the second floor above retail, would they be allowed to do that?
I would say yes, they would be allowed to do that.
Okay. But if they said, I want to build mixed-use housing above retail, they would not then later be able to convert it to short-term rentals?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, I'm getting kind of granular here, but where I'm going with this is, you know, one thing that I support, I support this ordinance, you know, in general. The, this is kind of one of those issues, though, where like ideology and reality clash a little bit, because on one hand, I think that short-term rentals is absolutely a consistent use for these zones. I think that people should be able to more or less do what they want to with their properties. But then at the other hand, the reality of the situation is that we do have a severe housing shortage. And 70 units is, you know, 150, 200 people that are workers at our small businesses. There are relatives, there are community members. And if there was a rapid conversion to short-term rentals of these units, I think it would be very difficult for the community to adjust to. So this is something that I've just been struggling with, this topic in general. But I want to lay that out there. I'm interested to hear what the public has to say about it, and we can discuss options more.
I agree, Mayor. I had a couple of, I'll just throw them out there, because maybe the public may have some thoughts on this, too. Just two kind of granular things as well. On, just bear with me, I apologize, I should have had this marked off. Essentially, I think, Pierre, on one of them, we have, you have to have, it says "full kitchen," and I just, I was wondering about that, because, you know, I was thinking about it, and I looked, and I was like, you know, we have restaurants on Main Street that don't have full kitchens. And yet, you know, we have really, they're really good restaurants. And so I wasn't sure, you know, if that was, if there's a definitional thing behind that, but like, I know, I just stayed at a bed and breakfast in Arizona in Bisbee, very similar town to Placerville, it's a mining town, copper ore. And, you know, I stayed in a short-term rental, and they had, it had a stove, but didn't have an oven, and it had microwave, so I could have cooked if I wanted to, but it didn't have what I would consider, still, I guess what you'd call a kitchenette, or if you was like at a Fairfield.
It wasn't a full kitchen?
Yeah, a Fairfield Inn and Suites, like you have a stove, but you don't have a, or you have a cooktop, but not necessarily a stove. So I didn't, to me, it seemed like an undue burden on anyone maybe wanting to do this, but to have maybe some sort of a kitchen, but maybe not a full kitchen. So I wanted to, just to get a thought there, and then put it into the thought process of my colleagues here. And then the other one was on paved driveway. Like, I know, I had a portion of my driveway that was gravel for like years, until I finally got tired of it and paved the whole damn thing, which was really expensive, but, you know, it worked, and I, you know, there's a lot of, in Placerville, I would say, there's a lot of houses that have either gravel or DG, different things. I'm not looking to say if people can go park up on their grass or anything else, but just wanted to kind of look at those two things as, are those being overly onerous, and do we have like off-ramps on those? Because I do think our topography is different on that type of, you know, you can have a nice gravel driveway, something to that effect, I certainly see them, and maybe it's more in the county, but it's certainly not something that's out of ordinary in Old River County.
But maybe out of ordinary for the highway commercial zone?
Well, I'm just, I mean, there's some odd, odd stuff in there, but I mean, if we're going to have an overarching policy, I just, I just don't think it's, because there's some lots, you know, along the way that if they had gravel, I mean, if they're off, I just don't know if that's something that they'd have to drop in there like 50 grand to pave it out, if they had like two car spaces that had, you know, gravel.
I just wanted to mention that the Planning Commission actually debated those two things in detail, and we have the chair of the Planning Commission here and staff, so I want to tell you that there was quite a bit of talk about that, that we could probably get some information to.
Yeah, Mayor, staff would be happy to just provide a real brief response of those two comments. I'll start with the paved parking. The first comment I would make is, the city does not allow gravel in commercial zones. So parking areas, drive aisles, driveways are required to be paved in commercial zones. So that goes without saying. I think what council member Saragosa may have been referring to is residential. City Code does allow gravel driveways in residential zones, so that is permitted, but commercial, I think, is a different animal, and I think that's why we put that in there, so that it's consistent with commercial development.
Understood.
With regards to the full kitchen being required, it was staff's intention that primarily when this first started, we were looking at, we're looking at dwelling units. So dwelling units that were originally long-term, and then providing for dwelling units to be used in the short term. So a dwelling unit under the building code is required to have a full kitchen. Staff wanted to get away from a situation where somebody may have, let's just say, a room or a building that has plumbing in it, and just creating a bathroom, and that kind of a situation, and a sleeping area, and then putting a hot plate or that kind of thing. I don't think that's what, at least that's what staff, and this was discussed at the Planning Commission as well, so, and I think the Planning Commission agreed, I don't think that's what we envisioned. I think the idea was not to create independent little hotel or motel rooms scattered about in our commercial zones, but that they be full dwelling units where somebody could live for an extended stay, you know, up to 30 days. So I think that was the intent, was to get away from, let's just say, shoehorning in some small room that just happens to have just enough, it has electrical, maybe has the plumbing, and then you just put a hot plate, and boom, you've got a short-term rental. I don't think that was the intent here.
I would say, I mean, thank you, I appreciate that, but I would say, you know, why not let the market bear that out? Like I said, I stayed at one, it was perfectly fine, and I say it, even like if you're at a Marriott Fairfield Inn, you're not getting a full stove in there, and you might have executives spending, you know, months in there. I just don't think it's necessary, like I said, we have restaurants that don't have full kitchens, so I don't think that is necessary, but I will leave it up to my colleagues, but that's, I just don't think that's necessary.
Just to that point, I want to think, talk about what Kara's talking about, and what you're talking about, and Kara's, you know, doesn't want to go too fast on this, and, you know, if we go ahead and make the restrictions pretty high-quality rooms, I think we'll move into it more gradually than if we lower the standards and then just make it so easy that everything can prove up. But we can always come back and kind of dial these back as we go, but for a starting point, I'm kind of in agreement that, you know, let's start with this, and then we can always talk about those things later. But, yeah.
So I have a question, I think, Kara, I'm not sure if this is what you're talking about, but we have a number of homes that have, especially when all the financing started, and we had a lot of old homes here that the contractors came in and repurposed and have made them nice little rentals. Is that what you're talking about? Are you worried that maybe those homes could be converted?
My concern is if, you know, we saw 30 or 40 housing units converted to short-term rentals within a year or two, it would be really
Right, so are those the homes you're kind of thinking of? I mean, would that be allowed, that those homes could be?
Well, right now, you know, we're talking about the commercial zones.
Right.
So there's non-conforming homes.
Right, and I know I'm jumping the gun, but I just wondered, I was trying to
So there's basically three types of dwelling units, my understanding. Pierre, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that in these zones, there's three types of dwelling units. One are standalone, single-family homes that are non-conforming uses for these now commercial zones. The other one is dwelling units that have been built as part of this mixed-use strategy that the city embraced and, you know, approved. And then the other one is just old units that are mixed-use, but, you know, they're above the bookery, and they're above some of the downtown businesses, and they're just, they've been there forever. So, you know, my, kind of my question, and where I'm going with my thinking is, is there a way to work this ordinance so that we say, okay, only the non-conforming homes, which would reduce, it wouldn't be 70 dwelling units that are now up for grab to be converted, it would be a smaller number, I don't know what that number is, but, or can we say, you know, maybe put a cap on the number that we approve in a year for, you know, three years until we, we're going to have a lot more housing with our affordable housing developments that are coming online, but it's going to be, you know, three to five years. So just to, just to make it a little bit easier for people to adapt to.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk more about this. I like the idea of a kind of a ramp-up time, if you will, on the housing stock, till we get to wherever the magic number is, or all, if that's the case. I mean, I don't think, I mean, we probably already see a lot of this happening already in terms of people converting some of these things, because Airbnb, let's face it, it's a thriving business. So I don't think, and again, you know, I love
And they are great, I love seeing them.
Yeah, I love Placerville, and I think it's a great place to come visit, that's why we're having two hotels that are coming in, plus we're getting, the Red Hawk is going to be right now on the way here with hotel rooms, if there's a need. But I also don't think, again, like I said, I don't think we're South Lake Tahoe as well in that terms of destinations, I don't think we're going to overnight also have, you know, 50 short-term rentals popping up in Placerville. But, all that being said, I like the idea of a gradual step-up as well, in these zones.
One more question for Pierre. So as a city, we are trying to incentivize and encourage mixed-use development in the highway commercial zones for workforce housing and just more housing stock in general. If we allowed new development to come in for the purpose of short-term rentals, you know, above floor, above retail or whatnot, would that disincentivize people to do housing instead, if they could make way more money doing rentals? And would that kind of be counter to our stated goals?
I would agree that that's a likely possibility. And again, I would just remind the council that it was your action to create the ordinance that allowed for the mixed-use development to provide for employee and workforce housing, because we have such an extreme housing shortage. And so I think another perspective, too, and I'm going to go ahead and touch again on the non-conforming uses, I think one of the, one of the positions staff has always had is, with a non-conforming use, when you identify a non-conforming use in a particular zone, I think it's incumbent on the jurisdiction to do what it can to incentivize, or do what it can to bring conformity to that zone. And so from staff's perspective, and it will have an impact, obviously, it could displace some housing. However, I think if you have a non-conforming use, meaning a single-family use in a commercial zone, and it then becomes a commercial use, such as a short-term rental, I think it's a positive thing in terms of you're eliminating a non-conforming use and making it conforming. You're then introducing then a commercial use in that commercial zone, which is more appropriate than maintaining a non-conforming use. And I think, if you recall, when I gave the staff report on the item where we were looking at a piece of property that had an old motel on it in the highway commercial zone, I think that was one of the arguments that staff made, is that here we have a non-conforming use, and if we can make it commercial, that's good. But I think there was a lot of opposition from the residents in the area that lived there in single-family homes, but there, that whole area was highway commercial. And so I think the question that staff made of the council was that if it's not appropriate, you could direct staff to come back, and we could re-zone that area to residential and eliminate the non-conforming use. And then the battle you have with somebody that owns commercial property, fighting with residents that also are on commercial property, but they're in a non-conforming, single-family residence.
Right.
So I just throw that perspective in there, hopefully not a curveball, but
Thank you. Okay, I've got one more last question, and then I'll open it up for public comment. Do you know, off the top of your head, which year we approved the mixed-use provisions for the commercial zones? Or circa, you know?
Yes, and I believe it's discussed in your staff report, so that was resolution number, let me see, let me find it. And the ordinance is contained within the staff report, the first staff report to the Planning Commission, so it is in your packet. Sorry, it'll be a little difficult, hard to find.
14.
But it's attachment C to the first staff report that went to the Planning Commission, and I can go to the end of that ordinance, because you have the whole ordinance in your packet. That was approved and adopted on October 14th of 2014.
Okay. All right. Thank you. With that, I am going to open this item 10.1 up to the public for comment. Please step on up to the podium if you'd like to speak.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. We say we're not South Lake Tahoe, but South Lake Tahoe wasn't always the way it is now either. And South Lake Tahoe has really been hammered by the short-term rentals. And I think we need to be very careful. We may not have a lake in our backyard exactly, but we're not that far from South Lake Tahoe, and we are very close to Sly Park and other things that people like to do. And what they found in South Lake Tahoe, which we will need to be very careful of, is that short-term rentals end up being party zones. And people rent them, and then they have a wonderful time, having a great party, but the neighbors are almost being driven out. People are selling out and saying, you know, "I can't live here anymore," because the neighbors on both sides are now short-term rentals, and I never know who is going to be parking in the driveway next door. I never know how late they're going to stay up at 3:00 in the morning, or if they're ever going to go to bed and turn out the lights. So while council member Saragosa may have been a very good and reasonable person to have doing their, the short-term rentals that he did, not all of them are. And so I have a friend in South Lake Tahoe who has exactly that same situation. When he moved there, it was a neighborhood, and people knew each other, and they got together, and they did barbecues, and they had a nice little residential neighborhood. And now, he's got short-term rentals on both sides and in back of him, and he says that he's just about ready to move out, because it's no longer a nice neighborhood, he no longer knows any of his neighbors. If he needs help, there's no one to help. And every weekend, it's a party. So I don't think we want Placerville to become Party Town. And that is what has happened to South Lake Tahoe, and it did not used to be that way. It used to be a very nice resort community, and if you didn't live there, there were plenty of hotels. Well, the hotels are tending to go broke, because the short-term rentals are taking all their business. So I think we need to be very, very cautious on this one.
Thank you, Sue.
And while commercial zones are one thing, I think we need to be really cautious when it comes to residential neighborhoods, even though if you have residents that are in a non-conforming use on residential, commercial property, but it's a, really a neighborhood, we need to look at the zoning very carefully to make sure that it shouldn't just go ahead and be residentially zoned. And we need to cut down on these people who are doing short-term rentals without providing the city any licensing or anything else, so.
Thank you, Sue.
My name is Celia Lux, and I have the Airbnb up above the bookery, and I also have the utmost respect for Sue Rodman and her service to the community, so I'm not going to dispute the concerns about Airbnbs in residential areas. I just want to point out that we're talking apples and oranges here. This resolution is the process that we need to, that we, who are in commercial zones, need to adhere to, to move forward with doing what is not at all inappropriate, and in fact, very appropriate, to the, to the commercial district, to the highway commercial district. So the resolution addresses specifically the areas that are commercial. And I might have a different opinion of Airbnbs if I were in a residence. My Airbnb is big enough for two people, the parties don't happen there, it's just a studio apartment. But, and there aren't neighbors to be concerned about, you know. And I'm close enough that if there's a problem, somebody can call, and I'll be right there. So all the things that are concerns in residential areas, I don't believe are concerns in the commercial areas, and that's what this resolution commercial areas, and that's what this resolution addresses. So, I just want to stick to what we're sticking to tonight and hopefully move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Celia. All right, I'm not last call on this item?
Hello, I'm Larissa Luhon, and I have two points to make. The proposed ordinance is very disappointing in comparison to the already-established El Dorado County VHR ordinance. All residents in the county, except for City of Placerville residents, have a fair and equal right to apply for a VHR permit to rent out their home. If you live on-site, you are considered a hosted rental and required to pay TOT taxes. The county defines a hosted rental with a very simple definition, and I ask that the city consider a similar option. It reads, "A hosted rental means a rental property at which at least one of the primary owners resides and sleeps during the period of the rental. This may be either the rental of a bedroom or bedrooms within a house, or the rental of a guest house. The use of a guest house as a hosted rental, excuse me, hosted vacation rental shall not be deemed a commercial use." Point number two. Placerville intends to define in great detail what a short-term rental should be. I noticed with Sarah Gosse's comments earlier, he mentioned the specific criterias in regards to kitchen facilities and paved parking. El Dorado County currently does not have this requirement. That is because they do allow for short-term rentals to be permitted in residential zones, and some of their properties do have kitchenettes and gravel driveways and are currently licensed. I do want to read the definition of El Dorado County's ordinance for vacation home rentals. It's a very simple definition. Vacation home rental means one dwelling unit, including either the primary single-family home, one unit of a duplex, or a single condominium unit, rented for the purpose of overnight lodging for a period of not less than one night and not more than 30 days, other than ongoing month-to-month tenancy granted to the same renter for the same unit. The county provided a simple and fair definition that provides allowances for difference and variation in homes. I ask that the council not place excessive application requirements in the permit process that makes it hard to qualify for without costly upgrades. The majority of homes in city limits will be the only part of an entire county excluded from having a permit process made available to them equally. The county permit process was not exclusive and specific to homes. It was provided to the public on a first-come, first-served basis. City Council, please add the option or adopt the county ordinance for our residential zones to provide a fair and equitable permit option to our residents, instead of hand-selecting what group of homes can apply by right due to impartial recommendations that favor a few homes in the commercial zones and historical homes only, as outlined in the B&amp;B ordinance. Please create an option for equal application rights, as El Dorado County has already done so. The last point I wanted to make too, with Jackie No's comments, thank you. I know you mentioned that we're going to create a starting point. From here forward, I ask that we create an inclusive starting point. Thank you.
Kirk Smith. Placerville is blessed by having great staff, hard workers who are very gifted, and if anything, overworked. And the beauty of this plan is its simplicity. And the drawback is its simplicity. Look, you've got a problem in Lake Tahoe about shortages of commercial or residential housing. Well, you're going to have that here under this plan because you've got 70 units, you're told, but there's nothing to stop you from adding extra units to do more building. Likewise, if you look at Airbnb units, you can see they even have some creative things like a shipping container that's 40 feet long that they convert to some very attractive places. You have no limits on that. And I think you should really focus on the idea that do we want Placerville to continue to be marketed as a place for people to stop on your way to Lake Tahoe for food and gas? Or should it be a point of final destination, a stopoff point that's going to be to really escape from it all? Because that's what the usual case is. So, if you have a choice of what you're going to view, do you want to have a place where it's in a commercial area and you're overlooking the view of a gas station, a liquor store, a tire exchange shop? Or do you want it to show things that are going to be attractive about what's special about Placerville? Like Celia, we've got some apartments downtown that are furnished for residential use, and I don't intend to change it. That's fine. But I've got two units that are historic up on the hill, one I intended to use for Airbnb, fully furnished, and then I waited for this ordinance to come along. Now, the other one is property that my great-grandmother sold to Senator Dillinger 100 years ago, and he gave it to his children who operated Dillinger's furniture store. So, it's got the top-of-the-line furnishings from the 1950s. Great. Some people actually love that. All the houses I've ever restored, I've kept them faithfully to the original historic footprint. Now, earlier I described the view of a fire over in Kelsey, one up the Snowcap Mountains. If you're coming to town, what would you rather look at? Do you want to have a place where you can view it, just as I just described, or do you want to look at some gas stations? You're closing that option off. In addition, you've got the problems that were up there about absentee owners, you know, or the idea of multiple owners. So, you're going to have land speculators, people can come in and get multiple units. So, one thing you could do is you could restrict the number of Airbnb or vacation units that you have. And that would help to address it. You cannot rent furnished places for long-term housing, rental agents tell me. People don't want it that way. So, I'm not going to get rid of that historic furnishings. So, what I'll probably do with this ordinance is I'll just Airbnb for one month or longer, get it to a market like people are coming in for nurses, that kind of thing. But I think that it needed more planning because your long-term objectives are not necessarily met with what's done for this simplistic formula. Oh, and by the way, the property I just described, all those preambles you have about noise and stuff like that, it's five acres, so that's not really a problem, is it? So, your general formula that you've got doesn't really fit the particular problems that you had up in Lake Tahoe that just allow it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
My name is James Webb. I am a current resident of Placerville. Short-term rentals, when I bought my property, it has capabilities of that. In viewing these city council meetings and planning commissions, I think it was earlier, or last planning commission meeting on this, where staff was asked what defined it as a room, and if somebody could rent it out, and I think that's why it was put in. But in the previous city council meeting, city council asked, or inquired, what a relic was, and staff said that you could rent out a room in your house. I think that staff is very biased on this, and creating codes with their intentions in mind, because I think it was 520, or 125, staff said that they had no, it was their opinion that short-term rentals would be in residential zones. So, they're creating their own biases in the, basically, ordinances that we're writing right now. And what is bed and breakfast if not a short-term rental? Like, there is certain, there's, I believe, 10 or 14 requirements for a bed and breakfast. One is a historical nature. That is 50 years or older, as in the construction, not the landscaping around it. Mine has a beautiful barbecue pit that was put in in 1940. And I was told, "Oh, no, that's not the historical structure," because that's what bed and breakfast needed, was the structure being 50 years old. And it just doesn't make sense for hosted rentals to be a part of B&amp;B, but not to be a part of anything else. Like, doesn't make sense. The codes that we're writing are just for the business districts, and three business districts only. I think it's like 70-something homes. Didn't we just pass a statewide law saying that there's no restrictions on making four ADU units on one, like, house? So, are those 70 units going to become 360 units or roughly thereof? There's questions that you can, right, I think that they fixed that one in the code that is being submitted, but people are going to do what people are going to do. It is their own property. I would like to see hosted rentals in residential zones, but planning commission basically says that it's their opinion that they will not let that go through. So, I think that was it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is David Ross. I have the property at 3038 Orchard Lane. First came in front of you guys in February of last year, I believe, or around March. And Sarah Gosse, I enjoyed your joke that it was not a short-term fix. Since then, we have temporarily been using our rentals for longer term to traveling nurses and PG&E people and the such, and that's been quite successful for us. So, I'm not too upset. The other point that was made by Sarah Gosse and a couple of the people was the paving requirement. That would be very difficult for my personal business. It is a commercial zone, and it is within, it is a city road, Orchard Lane. I'm not sure why it's not maintained by the city, but it's gravel, it's dirt, it's partially paved, and then I think it would be strange to have four parking spaces that are paved well onto the property. There's also the drainage issue that's created when you just start paving large portions of any area, and then that would have to be mitigated in some way as well. I also wanted to note that there was some public comment that was emailed, and it was attached to the agenda, and a large part of that comment was pretty false. She had put 16 listings that were, she stated were within the city limits of Placerville, nine of which were either duplicates of the same listing, or they were also outside of the city limits of Placerville, some as far as Sandridge, some as far as Greenstone. So, I just wanted to make that known. And then, lastly, I've been pretty conflicted about how this is only for commercial zones. I think it is a good jumping-off point. I would like to see eventually this go into residential zones as well, not to have an entire single-family residence be used as a short-term rental, because I think the biggest problem that everyone's concerned about is losing housing stock. But I think hosted, short-term rentals, and either that's an ADU, or that's a junior ADU, or even a room in someone's home that could be listed and rented on Airbnb. We have a small group of 110 members, it's a Facebook group, and the biggest thing that people want to do is rent their ADU. And a lot of people say that they don't want to rent to long-term tenants because they have however many problems over the years, which I had as well with my long-term tenants. So, I think that, again, this is a good jumping-off point, but I would like to see that residential be considered in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi, Mandy Rodriguez. So, I have had a cleaning business for 25 years, and I started in Lake Tahoe. Back then, people would put a wood sign on their, front of their house or railing as you would drive to Heavenly, and it said "For Rent," and you would just call the number and just rent. And then Craigslist came along, and then you go further down, and then Airbnb was kind of a evolution. But I've seen what has happened in Lake Tahoe, and I totally get that, you know, seeing neighborhoods literally decimated where you have no neighbors. I also did vacation rentals in Kirkwood, where you really didn't have the problem. People went there to ski, they weren't there to go to the casinos and party. So, obviously, those things don't exist here in Placerville either, and I don't think that they will. When I bought my house, my dream was to have my own Airbnb, since I've been cleaning them for 25 years. I would like to have my own. I don't have a lot of money, and I'm very hesitant, and I felt like when I talked to the planning commission, I was being pressured to sign a deed, I can't remember what that was called, basically limiting how I could use my house. And I'm like, "Well, we don't even have an ordinance against it, and I have to sign this deed that says that I won't rent as a short-term." So, my dream has always been to have a short-term rental, and as you guys know, I'm a silversmith, so I would like to have people come to my home, take a class, stay a couple nights, you know, take a two- or three-day class, and enjoy Placerville. And to me, something like that fits in with where you guys want to go with your vision of Placerville. It just makes sense. I have a huge driveway, I have plenty of room, it's a small area, it's 300 square-foot area. And another hesitancy is because I don't make a lot of money, if I were to get a tenant in there and they decided that they didn't want to leave, it would financially devastate me. And I just briefly read something, a new law, that says if you have to evict somebody, you have to pay their first month's rent in their new place. So, I mean, I just, for me, it would just be a game changer to be able to have my own Airbnb and host it. And I know you, I'm not, you're not my biggest fans, but when I teach my classes and I host and I do that, I do it really well, and I think it would be a great addition to Placerville. When my friends and I, we did Airbnbs up in Tahoe, we would bring paddleboards and beach cruisers, and it was just a whole experience. And I think that that could be done here without ruining neighborhoods, but enhancing neighborhoods. So, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. All right, I am not seeing anyone else stepping up to the mic, so I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. I just want to say I really appreciate all the comments on the residential short-term rentals, but that's not what we're discussing tonight. We cannot, we cannot take action on residential's tonight. So, those of you who've asked that we kind of take that blanket thing, I want you to understand, we simply can't do it. It's not what's on the agenda tonight. We can only take action on this item, which lists the three commercial zones and business districts. All right. Thank you. Couple comments I'd like to make. First, I really want to thank the planning commission. I think that the additions that the planning commission made were really thoughtful and kind of took into account all of the concerns that the council has expressed in past meetings and were great additions. I'm curious where the council, so in terms of, you know, my concern is for a rapid conversion of housing units into Airbnbs. I'm kind of curious where my colleagues stand on, one, either setting a cap to how many we're going to approve in the commercial zone, or adjusting the ordinance to have it apply only to the non-conforming homes, or possibly non-conforming, not newly-built homes that might disincentivize people to be doing mixed use. I guess I wonder if that's really a concern. I mean, we haven't had all those applications, people, I mean, they approved it in the central business district, and we didn't all of a sudden have a whole bunch of people. I mean, we could have had all those applications, and we haven't had them. So, I guess I don't really see it as a big concern because it's an opportunity that's been out there for a year and it hasn't happened. Central business district is much smaller, though. Pierre, do you know how many units are, oh, there's 20, 20 in the central business district, I think, was from the staff report? I think was from the staff report?
Was it Highway Commercial or Central Business?
Highway Commercial's 51, and Central Business, I believe, is 20 units. So that is, it's a smaller number. What do you think?
I, I think, I think it's, it's, I think that it's good to kind of pace ourselves with this. I don't, I agree that there's, there's probably not going to be a rush, but I also, you know, hedge our bets, if there is, then we can, then we can put a cap on it, and we could ease ourselves in the staff time as well as everything else, you know, it's just going to slow the process, process down a little bit. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that idea. I did have a couple of questions, if, if I could. Are people allowed to, so the non-conforming use in the Highway Commercial and, and, and Commercial and Business Districts, can we, they cannot, can you add more, can you add onto your homes, can you expand the homes, add rooms to them if they're non-conforming right now? You can continue to treat them just as your normal home. Is that right?
Yes, so those homes are permitted to be a non-conforming use for, you know, unless, of course, a city decided to have a sunset clause, where after so many years it would have to convert, some jurisdictions do that. We don't. I believe there's a section in our code that allows for, uh, expansion of a non-conforming use with a conditional use permit.
Okay.
So say, for example, somebody had a single-family home, they wanted to build a garage, it'd be something I think the city would permit.
Right, okay. One of the things I found interesting from one of the comments from the public was, was the idea that you could literally impact our hotels that, that we don't have yet.
But we will.
But we, we will. I mean, my fingers and toes are still crossed, but, uh, we could impact the hotels that are coming in and their, and their viability, um, by doing this, if, if we were to expand beyond this and open it up. I could see that.
Have, have you seen the prices of hotel rooms in Lake Tahoe?
Oh, my goodness.
I don't think there's any hotels going under in Lake Tahoe.
Well, no, but they meant here.
I, I don't. But I'm just, if we're, we're looking at Lake Tahoe, I mean, I don't think we're going to put hotels out of business.
Well, it's really anecdotal. Um, we don't have, you know, hard evidence that X number of hotels went out of business in X number of time for this reason, and it's really anecdotal. And I, and I found it interesting. I don't know how factual it is, it's possible it's factual, but I don't know that, and so I just found it interesting. I'm not trying to make a statement, but I could see how that could, but I'm not going to make a decision based on that at this time, because we're not really dealing with the residents, and we're not dealing with the high impact, and we're not really analyzing how many of, is, that we're going to do in the city. So that's a, it's, I just found it interesting, so, um, but that's off-topic, maybe, just a little bit, still involved with this stuff as well. Okay, that's it. I, I, I think I may have a couple more questions, but I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor first.
Okay.
To, to your point, Dennis, I think, as you say, we have a hospital, and we have an awful lot of nurses and construction workers, and so we have that demand for short-term rentals, who, people who don't, don't want to live here multi-years, but are here for eight months, three months, whatever, and so, and I'm not really sure we'd be impacting the hotels in that, that we'd be providing for the, that, those uses as well.
I think there's also enough short-term rentals just outside of city limits that would also be competing for those hotel rooms. I'm not sure if it would, um, make too much of a difference. So there's, there's a couple of points that have come up. It, it sounds like everybody's in favor of moving forward with this. Just a couple of details in terms of the kitchens and gravel. I'm not opposed to making it more flexible, um, and letting the market kind of decide what is desirable for renting. I think that in terms of kitchens, um, we should either define what the full kitchen is, and perhaps it's, you know, a sink, um, and a fridge, and a microwave or something like that. I don't think we need to require that there's, you know, full ranges and, and all those things, and one added benefit of that in the commercial zone is if there's a place that has, you know, a, a less desirable kitchen, it might encourage them to go out to eat, which...
That's kind of what I'm thinking, wouldn't you want?
Yeah, I don't think that that's necessarily a negative thing. It also might encourage people to be converting, you know, you, this is kind of what you didn't want them to do, um, converting rooms that were not necessarily, um, dwellings into short-term rentals. In some ways, I think that might also not be a bad thing, because it would compete less with housing units, so that's, you know, ki- that's kind of where I'm at with that, open to more discussion on it. In terms of the gravel, I, it sounds like pretty much everywhere is paved within the Highway Commercial Zone. It may not really be an issue, I don't know if we...
I wonder if, is that, Pierre, and I kind of think of my old Pla- uh, Planning Commission hat, but did that, would that be something that could be a variance? Um, you know, if somebody had a situation where it just made, maybe it made sense to just keep it as gravel, could they come in and seek a, a variance for something of that nature?
I'd have to look and see, but if it is, if, if the paving requirements is contained within the zoning code, then there would be the ability to apply for a variance.
Okay. You know, I mean, if we have, if we have one unit in the Highway Commercial Zone that is not paved, as, as one of our speakers mentioned, and it still has people coming and going, you know, as it being part of a rental, and it's always been non-paved, I don't know, it seems like kind of an undue burden, um, and it may be a non-issue if the rest, you know, the vast majority of the, the zone is fully paved.
Well, and you're not changing, you're not changing the, um, the impact, because it's really about turbidity, runoff, and those types of things in commercial zones, and you're not, you wouldn't be changing it, you'd just be forcing them to come up to a code during, during that time, and it really wouldn't change it much. Am I, I, oh no, I'm in trouble now.
No, no, you're not. I, I just did want to, um, inform you, though, that in applying for a variance, it's limited to unusual topography, the shape of the pro- it's not because of financial hardship. So that cannot be the basis for why a property owner, you know, doesn't have it, so...
Makes me nervous every time I see my, our attorney reaching for the mic, especially when I'm talking.
No, that makes, that, that makes me feel better, what she just said.
Yeah.
I think some standards have to be.
Well, that's... So are you saying that you want to keep the requirement to pave a driveway, even if it's never been paved?
I do.
I do. Because we're, we're talking about taking our non-conforming uses and putting them back to conforming. We're talking about our entire commercial and business districts, and what do we want to look like, this to look like when it's done? Do you want to see that patchwork of grave work, uh, gravel, or is that the standard we set, and, and that's what, you know?
Okay, that's valid. Um, and then what about the kitchens?
That's a good point. Um, I, I think there should be some minimum requirements for the kitchens. I don't know that, I, I don't, I don't know what the term of a full kitchen is, is it need to have a stove, a refrigerator, a, a, a surface, a heating surface, and a, and a sink, or is it just a sink and a...
Fridge.
What, what, yeah, what does that, what does that entail? Because it doesn't, it's not, is there a definition of that, of that definition?
Yes, typically, a kitchen would be more than just having electrical outlets where you can plug in a hot plate or a microwave. It would be where you have to have sufficient space for a refrigerator, and you should have a, a cooking stove top, could be electric or gas, but I mean, it'd be in accordance with the UBC. And again, I think what staff was saying, we, we wanted to stay away from just creating a, um, a large number of what I would just call individual hotel or motel rooms. These are short-term rentals, which is supposed to be a self-contained dwelling unit that's then rented out on a short-term basis, 30 days or less. And that was, that's what's behind that, so...
Well, how would you, um, if we were going to say, let's, let's kind of, let's kind of define that a little better, not go overboard, what, because you said we would, it would be, we'd have, you know, there's some discretion. I don't think you said those words, but you kind of imply that there would be some discretion to determine what is actually, um, qualifies as a kitchen and what doesn't. Could you define, could you give, could you take a, a swat at what, if you were to say, here's the bare minimum we should have?
Yeah, the bare minimum would typically be you'd have a stove top. I don't think an oven is required, but you would have a cooking facility that would include a stove top, doesn't have to have a microwave, uh, but it would have to have sufficient room for a kitchen, uh, sufficient space for, uh, food preparation, and it would be in accordance with the California building...
Refrigerator, right?
Refrigerator, yes.
And what?
And a sink.
And a so, absolutely, sink.
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, and, and a sink, your prep area.
I, I, and I, I think it should be specified, uh, the minimal, I mean, they could put more in, but I think...
Did, Pierre, did you just describe what is considered a full kitchen?
Yes, pretty much.
That's what I thought.
Oh, you consider that full kitchen or the minimum that...
I mean, if we didn't refer to the building code, we should have.
That, that would be also the minimum.
Well, right, we were, we were trying to define what would be a, the minimum of a, a full kitchen, and he, that's what he just described.
Or, or if we want, we can eliminate some of those things.
Bad minimum, or if we want to say just a sink, a small fridge, and a microwave is the minimum, you know, and a counter, or something.
Again, I'll, I'll go back to, and I'm not going to out them, but we have, there are at least three restaurants on Main Street that don't have cooktops.
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean, and they do great, great...
But I think that's where you run into problems, when you don't, if, I mean, if, if we don't set a criteria for, for what we're requiring, and they start bringing in hot pot plates, and, I mean, that's how, you know, accidents happen in kitchens and stuff, and especially if it's short-term people, I mean, you, you know, you don't know who these folks are.
Well, it would still need to be, you know, it would need a pass...
Code.
Code. You know, it would need to get approval, the fire department, based on this ordinance, would be part of the permitting.
But my point being is that we need to require the, the, the bare minimums that's going to make this...
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that, um...
Yeah.
Chief Cordero, would you, do you have anything that you want to add to this, this part of the discussion, in terms of...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the only thing I would add is, is strictly from a fire department perspective, we would certainly want a, an ordinance or a system in place that encourages compliance, where there is, uh, business licenses and things, because that triggers an inspection, a life safety inspection by the fire department. So anything that would encourage that versus these kind of underground ones would certainly be our position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I, I think, Madam Mayor, to your point earlier, is, I almost don't know if I, I might want people to take more rooms and build an ADU, because that wouldn't, I mean, if you're building that, then you're not using a whole single-family home for a, for a, a...
Right.
You know, for a, a short-term rental. So, I mean, if, if the market will bear it, and it can happen in those areas, then I think that's great.
Yeah. Pierre, what was your, um, from a staff's perspective, why, why did you not want to see just a bunch of individual hotel rooms here and there?
Because hotel rooms, you know, of, of course, because they're six units or more, and they're a hotel or motel, they have a, a level of standard to be maintained. They have onsite management, and usually they have a reception area, a lot of different things you're not going to see in a short-term rental. And so, from staff's perspective, we wanted to set a higher bar. We were afraid of, again, just, uh, motel hotel rooms just popping up i- in a shoebox, something that doesn't even meet a minimum, you know, size standard. So we wanted to set the standard at a, it's a, it's a dwelling unit. It could be a studio, so it could be fairly small, but it can only be so small under the building code, because it has to have the, you know, bathroom facilities, sleeping facilities, the kitchen with all the, you know, requirements to do and prepare food, without somebody just, um, having a situation where they have a, you know, an extra room in the back of their commercial building, and I go, wow, we can do something with this, we've got plumbing, we'll just make it into an Airbnb. So it was to raise the bar. It was staff's opinion to have a higher standard for short-term rentals, because they are not, it is not hotel or motel.
I can tell you, though, that, um, I mean, you're not going to put like some janky room on Airbnb or VRPO and think that someone's going to rent it. I mean, it, someone might try to do that, but, I mean, the reality is, you're going to have to have a high standard if you want to have the level of, of, uh, comments and people saying nice things about your property. If you have a low score, you're not going to get anyone staying with you. So, there's a natural standard that's going to come out from the marketplace anyway, so I'm not real worried about, you know, having a, you know, weird room on the back of something with a bad toilet or no facilities, because reality is, no one's going to, no one's going to stay there. Or going to get bad score.
You know, this is an interesting point that I really hadn't thought of at all, um, ahead of this. And on one, on one hand, I mean, I don't want to say that I'm for lower standards for the city, but on the other hand, you know, it, it allows for greater options, um, and a, a wider range of price points. Um, I don't know.
Was, was the, kind of the consensus of the council on this? Well, most of the things that we're going to see converted already should have full kitchens, would be my assumption. I mean, the Planning Commission went through two meetings, they did a lot of this, they debated this item, um, quite extensively, and I'm comfortable with their recommendation for this starting point. We can go back, and we can always change these later, but if you tell someone they only have to have this, and then you find out a year from now, oh, we should have really made that, that's going to be really difficult, because, I don't know.
The only problem with that thinking is, I mean, how long did it take us to get here? You know, it's, staff is so busy that if it's something that can be worked out now, um, I just don't, I guess I'm trying to understand you, because on one hand, you're like, I don't want too many to come too fast, but, but... My, my concern is housing. You know, and if, if this, if, if this converts, single rooms on the back of a building, that's not housing, you know, it's, I'm, I'm...
It's not taking away from our housing stuff.
It's not taking away from housing. Um, that's kind of why I'm okay with it here, um...
But to make a change to this ordinance, allowing kitchens would be something minor, I mean, we'd have to go through the process, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the debate whether we're going to do this or not, right?
No, no, no.
No, it would just be what they have.
It would be something minor.
Correct.
Yeah.
In the future. I just, like you said, I, I, I actually had the same exact thoughts that you guys did, but after watching the Planning Commission and watching them deliberate, I decided I, I was really comfortable with their recommendations.
Can, can you take, Pierre, can you take a single-family residence and convert it to a, to a, uh, quadplex, and then rent those out as VRBOs in a Highway Commercial Zone?
Yes, I would, I would say that somebody could come in, get a building permit, and then apply to have a, a short-term rental, be a, a lodging facility under six units.
Okay.
Also, Pierre, I wanted you to clarify, because a couple people had brought this up, but I thought that the new state, um, rules where they allow you, the ADUs, do not allow those ADUs to be rented as short-term rentals.
That is a true statement. I didn't know that we were talking about residential. I thought we were talking about a...
You don't think that's, that's accurate.
A single-family home in a commercial zone.
ADUs aren't, um, it's up to the local municipality to make that...
But that is, but that is correct, under state law now, short-term.
I don't think that's accurate.
An ADU cannot be converted into a short-term rental, and neither can a junior ADU.
Mona, Mona wants to... I agree with the junior, um, accessory dwelling unit, because it doesn't have all the facilities, and so we might be able to procode that. With respect, excuse me, with respect to an ADU, um, that is up to local ordinance, whether we allow it or not. Technically, it's a standalone dwelling unit, so if it's within the three zones that we're talking about today, it could be eligible, right? The other area of law that's, that was sort of mentioned, um, was Senate Bill 9. Um, there was a gentleman who made a public comment about being able to do a lot split and creating four units. There is a provision in that statute that limits it to owner occupancy for three years afterwards, so we have the protection of the lot split, um, not allowing the short-term rentals or any kind of, uh, rental for three years, but after three years, it's possible.
Okay. Thank you, Mona.
Well, that, and that is a long-term thing to think about, is, in all the would-have, could-have, should-have scenarios that could happen, the reality is, we have literally, potentially hundreds of units that could be built in areas that now are, because there is no single, single-family home zones anymore in California, because of SB 9 and SB 10, uh, unless it's historical districts or some others unique circumstances, so someone can knock a house down next to yours, Jackie, and in three years, build a, a fourplex. My district, mine's a little bit different, because I, mine's actually in a historical district, so it couldn't happen necessarily the same way, but five houses down where the line changes, you could. So you, you have those options of people that could do that, too. So I'm just, you know, in the panoply of things, there's going to be, you know, we talk about affordable housing, and, I mean, there's opportunities. If people want to build something and do something, they can, uh, so those options are out there, um, if people want to use, pull that lever.
And you know, um, you always hear stories, but when I was attending, um, CalCOG meetings, um, there's a gentleman there that owned a home in the Fabulous 40s District, and they were having a terrible time with this very issue. were having a terrible time with this very issue. And those are absolutely gorgeous, you know, homes, and, and people were coming in and buying them up, and they were renting them out, and they were having a lot of wedding parties. And I mean, it was really bad, and they had a, you know, I mean, so all kinds of things can happen, and I don't think we can predict, you know, we haven't got a.
No, but I think there's also challenges in Placerville. If you've looked at the topography.
I know, we always say, but we say, it's never, you know, like, we, it won't happen here, well.
Well, no, I can, but I just look, when I think about my neighbors, and I think about the hillsides, and I think about the cost of building those sorts of things and making them cost-effective, I, well, it always could happen, but I don't think it's happening tomorrow.
Agreed.
All right, I'll, I'll take, or do you have another comment?
I was, I do like the idea of some form of kitchen that is a standard, as opposed to a.
I do, too.
No standard at all.
Are you in favor of making the standard a little bit lower than a full kitchen, but still having a standard?
Well, it depends on what they, we still don't know what a full kitchen, what they, you know, they, they've got that in.
Sink, fridge, range.
Yeah.
Countertop.
To me, I'm good with that.
I have a, I have a proposed definition for the council's consideration, if you would like. A kitchen means an area within a structure that is used or designated to be used for the preparation or cooking of food, and that contains the following: cooking appliances such as stoves, ovens, or microwave ovens, and a sink and refrigerator.
I like that definition a lot.
Yep.
Okay.
They're all hands, right?
There was an or between a range and a microwave.
Yeah. And the cooking surface, right. Range stove, or.
Pierre, are you good with that? Did you get that definition?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. My only question is, where did that definition come from?
Mona.
Webster?
Was that out of the government?
Encyclopedia Britannica.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take a stab at the motion. I would like to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, and make the following amendments to the kitchen definition as stated, and to add a clause that limits the number of approvals to 10 per year.
I'll second that.
I don't, I don't know if I'm in favor of that.
Well, real quick, Pierre, does 10 sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think that sounds fine. I think we'll get much less than that.
I do, too.
So, that seems to be a good, you know, high number.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Regina, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Now?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, and thank you for everyone that came and spoke on this item. We've been working on it for a long time, and we really appreciate your feedback. Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about Airbnbs and short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. It sounds like that is something that will need to be addressed, so we couldn't do it tonight, but it will, it will come up again. Okay? We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we'll be back at 7 o'clock.
It's 5:01.
All right, we're going to bring this meeting back to order, and start with 11.1. This is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year operating budget and capital improvement budget. And Mr. Warren, our Director of Finance, has this report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So over the past six months, your budget team, which is comprised of all department heads and the city manager, has collectively developed both the operating and capital improvement program budget in a manner that aligns with the city council's established fiscal policies, draft strategic plan, and maintains essential program delivery to the greatest extent possible. As part of the budget development process, the city council held two budget workshops, one on May 9, and staff presented department requests, including alternative service-level changes or ongoing programs, capital outlay or equipment, CIP projects, and conference training and travel, and received input from the council and the public. A second budget workshop was held on May 23, and staff presented the draft operating budget and CIP budget for 2223, and received input, again, from the council and public. An initial public hearing was held regarding the budget on June 14, and staff received additional input from the city council and public. The Measure HL Sales Tax Committee met on both April 18 and June 6 to discuss the proposed street sewer system and water system projects that should be funded and constructed over the next year. The committee's recommendations have been incorporated into the proposed budget. Other than the addition of items for, there was a $5,000 contribution to the Placerville Fire Safe Council, which David Zelinski mentioned earlier, $5,000 for a new city grant program, a $10,000 set aside for the historic city asset inventory project. Both the proposed operating budget and CIP budget include essentially the same revenue and expenditure assumptions as what was discussed at your open hearing on June 14. The attached budget documents are the same format as in the past, including multi-year summaries of all aggregate operating revenues and expenditures, as well as detailed expenditure summaries for all departments and divisions. The proposed operating budget is balanced and totals $23,422,665, of which $10,986,836 is for general fund uses. The proposed general fund budget reflects a $1,173,000 or 11.96% increase. The operating budget includes restoration of the remaining services that were foregone during the pandemic, also the salary and benefit commitments to employees, six new full-time positions amongst the police department, development services, engineering, administration, and finance departments. The proposed budget includes $46,325 for training and $414,000 in new equipment, from desktop computers to a mini excavator for the public works department. The proposed CIP budget totals $3,408,952, and includes 35 projects from upgrading the police department CAD RMS software and hardware to repaving Jake Way Road. Overall, this budget includes 16 new paving projects, many of which are in local neighborhood streets. The budget is a living document that can be revised at any time, and staff plans on returning to the city council at mid-year to consider funding an additional code enforcement official position, and perhaps repurposing the sewer and water bill assistance program, which is funded by the American Rescue Plan Fund Act. I would like to publicly thank the budget team and the city council for once again working together to balancing the budget, which is a reasonable plan for operating the city over the next 12 months, and a wise investment in the future. I also want to thank your city treasurer accountant, Candace Bernardi, and accountant Sharon Heckley for their stellar work on helping prepare the budget this year. So with that, I would respectfully ask the council to approve the proposed fiscal year 2223 operating budget and CIP budget as presented. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions at this time from the council? No?
Is now the time you'd like to hear from me? The issue, the, and I'm, I was not at the last meeting, or I would have brought this up, but I wasn't here. The $5,000, and what did you call it for the?
There's an additional $5,000 contribution to the Placerville Fire Safe Council.
No, not that one, the other one.
A $5,000 grant program.
Grant program, okay.
So, a few years ago, we had a grant program, and it was funded one year, I believe, and since then, because of budget constraints, we hadn't done it, but we're bringing that back.
So my comment on that is, when I heard about it, I thought, why are we doing that? Because when we had that program before, we didn't have the cannabis shops, or the issue that we're, and now, part of our agreement with the cannabis folks are that 1% of, is it their gross sales, or it's 1%?
Gross sales.
And is going to be for community.
Benefit.
Benefits. So to me, it's kind of like we're, and, and so then, and, and I, Dave indicated that right now, if we, what their share would be like, would be like something like $18,000.
Correct.
And probably for a year, it would be like $30,000, so with both of them contributing.
Potentially.
And this is ballpark, I understand that, it's nothing, you know, but I'm, I'm thinking, it's kind of the same program, and, and why are we going to have two of them? And why that extra, I mean, we could put that other 5,000 towards something else that we might need a little bit more, since we've already, you know, we've stipulated that these folks, it's for community benefit funds, and, and it's the same, and I know there's going to be a committee, and I don't know who the committee's going to be comprised of between, except the owners, I guess, the cannabis shops, but people are going to be able to apply to get grants, so, and it's locals, you know, so I, to me, it's kind of like we're doing double duty here, and maybe we don't need.
I see it as complementing the community benefit program, and perhaps Mr. Morris could share his ideas for the secondary grant program.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to looking at that. I will say, this community benefit program, cannabis community benefit program, does not necessarily have a process for people to apply to get funding for that. That may be something that comes out.
I thought that that was.
No, but it also could be something where the committee says, let's do X, Y, and Z, let's just spend it for that. It may not be opened up for a community grant. It could be, but it doesn't have to be.
At whose discretion is that money?
Ultimately, it's the city council. This committee will make recommendations of how to use that funding, and bring those back to the city council.
Okay. I thought that the cannabis owners had quite a bit of say, they're on the committee.
They're on the committee.
Yeah. Which is fine, I mean, they're money that they're raising, but.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm, you know, if, if that program replaced, what I have in mind, I would be all for saving $5,000 from the general fund. My understanding was that, like Cleve mentioned, that wasn't necessarily a program for people to apply for different projects that they want to do around the city. Would I envision?
I remember when we talked about it, and we said, you know, because they, when that was, when this was presented to us, they talked, they said, you know, Boys and Girls Club, da-da-da, and I said, you know, there's just a lot of clubs out there that really could apply for this, and everybody said yes, so that's where I got the idea that it was open to, you know.
Are you, are you comfortable with the distinction, though, and that they're going to do their thing, and this would be something more in line with?
I just thought that maybe we don't need to do that extra 5,000, that it could go to something else, since we've already, you know.
So my, my, my thought is a little bit different, in that the cannabis people are going to have their committee, they're going to make their recommendations and do their thing?
But it's not their committee, it's just maybe like one from each of them, so there's two.
Is that the entire committee?
No, there's, you defined it, I believe, myself, Dave Warren, the police chief, and the community services director are the other members that are on that committee.
So, so what my point is, is that there's a different group of people for that money that's providing, that is providing the, the direction, and ultimate discretion comes to the council, but from my perspective, I wouldn't go against them, and there might be things that this council feels that we want to move towards with this funding that support our community in a different way.
So this 5,000 is, it's just, it's a council thing?
Correct.
Yeah, and, you know, what I had in mind for this 5,000 is, we get a lot of asks for, you know, $1,000 for this, these history plaques on Main Street, or $200 for plants for a community garden, or, you know, just little amounts of projects that community members want to see happen in the community, and it would be nice if the city could kind of take an active role in supporting people that come to it with these, you know, projects and initiatives that they want to see improved.
It'd be, instead of having to make it a council issue, I mean, you know, that they would come to us for funding, right?
Yeah, they, they could apply, there would be some guidelines, so it's not just like, you know, a request here and there, there would be like a deadline, and then we could look at all of the different projects and be able to decide, whereas right now.
I'm fine with it if you want to, but I just got to thinking about that, and I thought, my gosh, that was, that was part of the, you know, the icing to make this thing go, and I just thought, why are we doing?
You know, once that program gets established, perhaps the committee decides that they want to do a grant application, that would be, you know, basically the same thing, and then I would be fine with, you know, not doubling up necessarily, especially, you know, in future years.
Well, there's just so many things that we need.
Yeah. But it seems like that, that committee's not quite there yet, and we, this is an opportunity that we haven't had in a long time.
Isn't it mandated? I mean, they.
But they don't have a process. My understanding is that there's not, they haven't been meeting distributing money.
Correct.
Right?
We've been waiting, basically, for the fund to build up a little bit, because as you recall, it started at a lower level. The first quarter was 0.25%, rather than a full 1%.
So it's not designated like once a year at a certain time?
No, no, it is, no, the money is in the account, and it can only be used as designated by that committee to the city council.
And that might be a great source for larger projects, like a whole new playground, or, you know, a big donation to the Boys and Girls Club, or, you know, just larger, larger projects, whereas this $5,000 is kind of more of.
That's if we have it every year, too. This is, to me, this is a one-time thing. Next year, we're going to go.
We'll see. And I'm more comfortable with that, what Dennis just said, that we're going to do this one year, rather than put this in as perpetuity, because, you know, every year we look, and our, our public works need chainsaws, and I have, I'd have a hard time saying, no, we said we're going to give this to whoever really needs it.
Okay, my mistake.
I have no illusions that when the chopping block comes down, that this would be one of the first things to go, just as a matter of necessity.
I thought it was, I thought you were.
I would love for there to be, you know, this ongoing grant program.
I thought it was, you were, I thought it was your proposal was for yearly. I mean, I thought it was, you know.
Well, I thought that's what you meant, too.
No, I mean, I would absolutely love it to be ongoing, but I also realize that there's budgetary realities and, you know, priorities that are.
We won't always have the stimulus dollars.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So we're doing this as a one-time program?
This is a one-year budget, so.
The five grand.
Yeah, I mean. How much time and effort are we going to put in for this 5,000? How much staff time is this going to take if we're only going to do this for one year? Is my concern. I'm always concerned about staff time, and so I'd just like Cleve maybe answer to that, you know. What do you anticipate in, in staff time to, to fully, you know, from start to finish of this program for this $5,000? What kind of staff time are we looking at?
I haven't looked at that in detail. I know that we established a similar program in the past, and so we kind of already have the makings of it, so we won't have to reinvent that. But it will take some time to notice and get the information out to those that may want to apply for the grants, and then evaluate those and bring back recommendations to the council. So there's some time there involved.
Or alternatively, there could just be a deadline, applications could be included with the council meeting agenda, and council members could just choose how they want to use the money.
You could also nominate like a subcommittee.
Yeah.
I mean, there's ways to try to, to try to take a.
Well, I feel a lot better now that I know that we're not trying to hold this spot every year.
It would be great, I mean, don't get me wrong, that would be ideal, but I also.
I just look at the hard decisions we make every year.
This is a one-year budget, we have.
So Jackie, I'm with you, I made the same error.
I remember that one year, we, we cut out less than $1,000 in tools for Nick, and I was just like, what? How can we not even afford $1,000 for tools? And so, yeah, that, that makes sense.
He thought of a sort, that was his, he offered that up.
It's true. I was like, I'll go buy a chainsaw.
Okay, so no changes on that one?
Okay.
All right.
All right. So any other questions from council? Okay, let's open this up to the public. Item 11.1.
Good evening, Kathy Lishman. I wasn't going to speak about the budget, but I have to speak about your last idea. I do not think the city is in the business of being a grant giver or benevolent, whatever it is, like Nick needing $1,000 worth of tools. If you have $5,000, you should get staff to make recommendations, maybe not even the department heads, but other staff, to plead for things that were taken out of the budget that they really feel that they need. So I think it's not a good idea. I don't think the city should be doing this, sorry.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sue Rodman, I'll vote with Kathy Lishman.
Sue Rodman, I'll vote with Kathy Lishman on this one. I think that the staff has needs for things that got taken out of the budget, that $5,000 would be much more valuable for that than to see who wants to beg for money from the city. I mean, it's been, I remember when there was all kinds of things. We wanted flower pots on Main, we wanted this, we wanted that, we wanted all these things, people coming to ask for money. But I agree, we've done a good job with our city. It is in good shape. Let's keep it that way. But that $5,000 probably could go much better to provide staff with some of the things that they need. The police department needs things. Our people who take good care of us, that work up at City Yards, they need things. Let's give it to them instead.
Thank you, Sue.
Hi there, Amy Lopper. I just wanted to thank you for putting the $10,000 towards the historic resources asset evaluation. The current one is really hard to work with, older than myself and really incomplete. And I think that that will add, yeah, a couple of us, right? And so I think it will add a lot of clarity to that really important factor in our city. And at the last planning commission meeting, I brought up the idea of putting signs at the entry to our historic districts that would take some of the burden off of individuals being notified and visitors, that that is a historic district. Because a lot of times we get the, I don't know, or maybe it's a new Realtor that didn't share that with them. So just wanted to put that out there as an option going forward to really protect our historic districts.
Thank you, Amy. All right. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to close public comment on this item. Just for clarity, the $1,000 of tools that we could not get, Nick, was from a previous year. The situation this year is significantly different, which is the only reason why this got added.
But to the point, would $5,000 get us a chipping program of something that we really needed? I don't know.
I don't think it would. Dave, how much extra do we have in our reserve for this year's budget?
The surplus is approximately $30,000.
Okay. And then there's the strategic, the larger amount that's reserved as well.
You have a $75,000 contingency for unforeseen expenditures. So that's basically a line item for, you know, basically designated as whatever you want for whatever you want.
Okay. So part of the reason why I want to listen here is because we do get requests a lot, and we do tend to grant them here and there, but there's not, like, nobody looks at all of them together and says, this one we're going to fund, this one, you know, it's just kind of, they trickle in and there's not a lot of consistency or structure or fairness. So that's why I wanted to add it in. And I think we should keep it. That's my two cents, but.
Yeah, I mean, the way I look at it is, I mean, these are basically ARPA funds. I mean, these are basically stimulus dollars that came in. They're one-time funds. They're, you know, we're probably not going to have this again. I mean, maybe next year they're still with inflation and, you know, there still might be some sales tax receipts that are up because of that. But, I mean, I think the R word is probably, if it's not here, it's around the corner. And so we won't continue to have those. But I'm comfortable with, you know, like anything, we're doing, we're using it for a one-time, I'm looking at it as a one-time dispersment of a sort of a small amount of funds to community groups.
So Cleve, what is the program that we had before? Was that an established program? Or was it something that was supposed to be ongoing? I don't even remember it, I'm sorry.
We did it one year, like Dave Warren said, and it was established kind of for what you're talking about right now, same purpose.
But it was a one-time thing?
It was. We only did it one year. Again, I think as Mayor Taylor has mentioned, I think the intention was a hope that maybe it could continue. But, you know, it was one of those first things to get cut out when you have to make cuts in your budget, so.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we, I was just worded here. I'd like to move that we adopt the attached resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget and CFP budget as presented. I'll second. And I would also like to thank Dave for, you know, we went, I mean, this is, I mean, this is a great budget. It's well-prepared, it is easy to read, it is, has a great picture on the front too of Christmas. I love that. I like pictures. But it is, you know, you guys really do a great job preparing the budget. We, through our processes with each department head, it was, it was a great process. And the reason why we're not talking about it too much right now is because we talked this thing to death. And you have done three great presentations prior to this, walking us through the budget line by line, and each staff member identifying and owning their own individual budgets. And I think that was, I think the process we went through this year, I don't know if you guys agree, but I thought it was the best process. It's your only process, maybe, but I've done it a few years.
I think it's because we finally had some money.
Well, that made it better.
That makes it a lot easier.
Yes. And so having money actually makes it a lot more fun to do a budget.
More fun.
Instead of trying to figure out what we have to cut, we can figure out what we're going to pay. That was a great thing this year. It probably made your life a little easier, too.
It sure did. Thank you. It was definitely a team effort. Thank you.
Yeah, well said, Dennis. Big thanks to staff for working on this and being realistic with their asks. And I've got to say that it felt really good to be able to get things for the city that it needed for a long time. After the last three budgets where we were just cutting things out, that really liked the community and the city staff and everything needed desperately. So it's a different year this year. Don't know how long it will last for, but it's nice.
Think positive, Kara.
All right. So we have a first and a second. Any final comments? All right. Regina, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you. All right. And then the next item is 11.2. And this is to adopt a resolution establishing the appropriation limit or the GAN limit for fiscal year 21, 22, and determine compliance with government code 7910. And Mr. Warren has this report as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a routine item that you take action on annually. Section 7910 of the state government code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriation or GAN limit by resolution each year. The city is required to adjust its GAN limit by both the prior year per capita personal income increment and the prior year change in population. The change in per capita personal income was actually 5.73% change, and the change in population was negative 0.69% according to the State Department of Finance. Based on these factors, the fiscal year 21, 22 GAN limit is calculated to be $26,782,399. The general fund proceed revenue subject to the GAN limit is $8,270,525, leaving $18,511,874 of unused appropriation limit. Once again, Placerville is well within its GAN limit. And with that, we ask the council to adopt the resolution establishing the GAN limit for fiscal year 21, 22 and determining compliance with government code 7910.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions? I've got a question, Dave. What would it take to reach, to reach that amount of revenue?
You would essentially have to double your general fund budget to get there. I mean, you're just, just at 10 million, so another 8 million, you'd have to, yeah.
Look at the state of California, but then through budget trickery, we've, you know, some kind of rebates back to people in some regard that they've gotten under the GAN limit, but they probably have surpassed it the last two budgets.
But they have, does income tax and everything factor into this?
It does.
So for, are there cities that actually surpass? Because all that goes to the state, so, you know, we can't do anything about that. But are there cities that actually surpass their GAN limit?
There have been a few. Beverly Hills is one of them. And there's a handful of very affluent areas that have, but they're very small.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Very small number.
For anyone, you know, who's watching this, the takeaway is that we would be allowed to make a lot more money in taxes than we do. Okay. I will open this up to public comment. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move we adopt a resolution establishing appropriation limits for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and determining compliance with government code section 7910.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you, Regina. All right. Moving on to our discussion items for tonight. Item 12.1, this is a drought declaration. And Mr. Warren has this report as well.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of the council. The city purchases water from Eldorado Irrigation District as a wholesale ratepayer through a water supply agreement. The water supply agreement requires the city to implement and enforce the district's current drought preparedness plan and drought action plan during district-declared drought conditions. Due to the unusually dry conditions and dwindling water supplies last year, the EID Board of Directors adopted a resolution declaring a state of emergency stage one water alert district-wide, including the city of Placerville, at its meeting held on June 28, 2021. The city council adopted a similar resolution, 8990, for city water customers at your meeting held on July 13, 2021. Although EID's water supplies have improved since that time, overall statewide drought conditions have worsened, and the EID Board of Directors adopted a resolution renewing its previous declaration of a state emergency stage one water alert district-wide at its meeting held on May 23 of this year. In accordance with EID's 2021 drought action plan, the objective of a stage one water alert is to initiate public awareness of a possible water shortage in the near future and to encourage water conservation. Stage one actions target up to 15% demand reduction as compared to the 2020 level through the implementation of voluntary measures. Along with staff actions centered around customer outreach, water waste, monitoring of demands, and just district water supplies, the drought action plan identifies voluntary measures focused on outdoor irrigation as a way to achieve water savings as follows: applying irrigation water during evening and early morning hours from 7:00 PM to 10:00 AM; inspecting irrigation systems for leaks, then repairing and or replacing them; adjusting sprinkler runtimes to avoid runoff; avoiding pursuing construction of new swimming pools or rehabilitation that would require filling with potable water. In general, customers are encouraged to review their individual water usage and look for ways to reduce their usage up to 15%. EID does not mandate any conservation measures in stage one water alert. Section 5 of the water supply agreement between the city and EID states, "The parties understand and agree, the city is subject to the district's then-current drought preparedness plan and drought action plan, that during times of district-declared drought conditions, the district may impose drought water rates, restricted uses, and reduce or limit water service to the city in accordance with those plans." The section also states, "District shall notify city of its proposed actions as soon as known to district. The city agrees to implement and enforce such actions immediately upon their adoption by the district," and that's out of the agreement. Accordingly, the city is expected to ask its customers to continue reducing their baseline water consumption by 15% on a voluntary basis as prescribed by EID's stage one drought alert. Additionally, staff plans on continuing the following actions internally: reducing irrigation levels in all parks, open space by 15%, inspecting all irrigation systems and making repairs as needed; having heightened leak detection and repairs of city water mains and laterals; urging all city employees and contractors to continue conserving water during day-to-day operations. Staff plans on distributing a public notice with the July utility bills, asking customers to continue conserving 50% of their 2020 baseline consumption. Water-saving suggestions will also be included with the notice, which will also be posted on the city's website and Facebook page. In light of the continuing statewide drought conditions, Governor Newsom issued an executive order on March 28 of this year directing the State Water Resources Control Board to consider adopting emergency regulations to increase water conservation. On May 24, the Water Board adopted a drought-related emergency water conservation regulation, which includes a prohibition against the irrigation of non-functional turf, which is a new term for me, with potable water in the commercial, industrial, and institutional sector. This regulation also applies to homeowner associations, common interest developments, community services organizations, and other similar entities. It does not include residential customers. Non-functional turf is solely ornamental and not regularly used for human recreational purposes or civic or community events. There are exceptions to the irrigation of non-functional turf, including the use of water not prohibited to the extent necessary to ensure health of trees and other perennial non-turf plantings, or to the extent necessary to address immediate health and safety need. Requests for continued irrigation of non-functional turf may be approved when a customer certifies that the turf is a low-use plant and with a plant factor of 0.3 or less and demonstrates the actual use is less than 40% of reference evapotranspiration. This mandate does not apply to turf that is irrigated with recycled water. Staff is working on addressing the irrigation of all city-owned non-functional turf. We do have some, Ray Lurie Drive and Mallard Lane. Staff also plans on contacting affected property owners who have non-functional turf and inform them of the new regulation. The recommended conservation measures could have a negative impact on the city's water rate revenues for fiscal year 22, 23, if all ratepayers achieve 15% conservation level prospectively through June 30, 2023. The forecasted impact to the Water Enterprise Fund would be $263,723. Staff anticipates the potential $263,000 rate revenue impact could be absorbed by the Water Enterprise Fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures and operating reserve. Additional analysis and recommendations will be provided in concert with your mid-year budget report that is tentatively scheduled to be presented to the council in March of '23. And with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution renewing the drought declaration. Jesse Satch, EID's Communications and Media Relations Manager, is here tonight, and either Jesse or I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions from the council?
I have one. The 263,723 that you say Water Enterprise Fund would be, it would reduce it, the impact to the Water Enterprise Fund? Is that a pass-through or is that money that would be retained within the water fund for our district?
That would be money that, so that, what that, first of all, that number is net of, so it would be the lesser purchase of water from EID against the lost rate revenue that we would not get from the rate, from the customer, if you will. And so if that were to happen, we would dip into your contingency potentially or your reserves within the Water Enterprise Fund. The reserves right now are over $1 million, so we have adequate reserves to absorb that.
So this is not pass-through money? I mean, we buy water from EID.
Correct.
We charge our customers for that water.
Right.
And so if they reduce their, let's say I pay $100 a month and $15, I reduce it by 15%, so I pay the city of Placerville 15 less dollars. Out of that 15 less dollars, how much of that goes to pay for water? And how much of it does the city retain? Kind of rough.
It's about 10%.
We retain 10%?
The cost of water is about 10%.
We retain 90%.
90%. Yeah, because mostly the cost of delivering water is the, your distribution system and the labor in order to do that.
Gotcha, okay. And then how well have we done in terms of reducing our water? Since this was initially done to now, have we reduced it? I guess year-to-date this year, I don't know what numbers you used.
Good question. Actually, to be quite frank, when you look at the consumption between July 1 of 2021 to present, there hasn't been a huge difference. And I think it's because we started to have a good winter. And I think it's because we started to have a good winter and it was forecasted to be a decent weather, and I think people didn't change their behaviors that much. So that could change, but I don't see an impact at all this year. Unfortunately, our water supplies, according to EID, are fairly decent, especially compared to the rest of the state, so. But we do need to encourage our customers to save whenever possible, up to 15%.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dave, I have a question on the non-functional turf.
Yes.
And sending a notice out to property owners, is that residential properties or are you thinking mainly like commercial landscaping and?
Exactly, commercial landscaping. So it would not be residential landscaping, it would just be ornamental turf where it's not used for civic or event-type activity, park activity. So lawn strips, for example, where there's no trees, there's no plant, you know, perennials that are being watered at the same time.
Okay.
Potentially.
All right.
We, we at one time had a, Pierre? We at one time had a, had a ordinance that restricted the use of artificial turf in commercial zones, is that still a thing?
Yes, that's, that's still in effect. And we had modified our development guidelines, and I think we've also adopted a landscape ordinance so that we discourage turf. So if somebody were required to remove their turf, then they would replace it with other zero-scape drought tolerant plants and that sort of thing. So depending upon how their landscaping plan was adopted through a site plan review process, that may require amending. Or maybe something that staff could do administratively if it's substantially compliance with the adopted landscape plan. Because any, any private landowner leased more recently, if they went through the site plan review process, they would have entered into a landscape maintenance agreement with the city to ensure maintenance in accordance with the approved plan.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right.
Dave, I'm trying to think this through, how this would work. So, you know, so there probably isn't a hit this, this year to the budget in terms of this, but down, maybe next year, fiscal year, there potentially could be. I'm just, I mean, is there a way for us, and this, I guess this maybe is a question for EID as well, I mean, for us to, like, park water, you know, to buy, pre-buy? And I, and the reason I say this is because EID sold, you know, 750 acre feet to Westlands. And so if Westlands is going to buy the water, and I get it, I mean, the water's going to basically go to the ocean if you don't sell it because there's not enough capacity to store it all. But if we're going to take a hit as a customer on a bottom line, is there a way for us to think ahead then and, and bank water ourselves so that we're not taking a hit and there's a way to equal it out? I'm just, I'm trying to think this through because certainly EID had excess water, and then for us having to conserve it at the same time, and there could be a hit later, I'm just trying to see if there's a way for us to not lose funding.
There is that empty facility up on Party, water holding facility, just sitting there.
So, yeah, good question. I'll defer to Jesse to answer that question.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Satch, I'm EID's Communications Manager. That may not be a question I can answer, the idea of banking water, but I'm sure I can get back to you on that. I'm not entirely sure how that would physically be done.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering because I know, I mean, obviously Westlands has the ability to bank it and to move it around, but it, you know, some of it stays in Folsom until it's, it's needed and it gets diverted.
Yeah.
There's all the different ways of how the water transfers work, but I'm just trying to think of a way that I'd rather keep the water local in the sense.
Sure.
And maybe protect our ratepayers as well, in a way if we're gonna, if we know we're gonna maybe move into a, a higher level of drought later and not hit our fund. So I wouldn't mind looking at, and have a offline and looking more into that later.
You bet.
Thank you.
While we have you up there, you know, the, the idea that our water fund will lose revenue, net revenue, if there's a 15% decrease. Are there also rate increases when we get into, I mean, there's drought rates that would kind of compensate that if this was a long-term?
There are absolutely mechanisms for having a drought rate. EID doesn't anticipate that happening.
Okay.
Based upon the supply that we have and how that we are managing the, the water, we don't anticipate that at this time.
Okay, great.
Since you're there. So this, so, thank you. So the city, because I would ask this question, you know, the city is requesting that our people reduce rates because the state asks us to do this.
Right.
We have sufficient water to supply this community this year.
Right.
Based on all the projections and how full different lakes are around here. Where, where does that leave us in terms of, of compliance? And the, the requirements, are the, all these are just recommendations at this point?
Yeah, so the, the governor has requested, I believe it's up to 20%. EID's stage one water, water alert fulfills that and complies with that need. It's a voluntary 15%. You know, internally with EID's customers and community, we've, we've noted that, that folks have in fact had a very baked-in conservation since even before the 2020 when they're, they're, they're measuring this, since before the last drought, 2013, our folks have, have reduced water by over 20, 23%. So we see that, that our, our community is actually responding quite well, but we do, we don't, we don't at all imagine that this will be, we're obviously planning for the worst, but at, at this time or?
Does that count for anything?
Does it count for anything?
Does the, does the state cabinet, do they look in, are they just looking year-to-year? And so we did X number last year, we need to save, they're looking for 15% over last year?
Yeah, well, you know, the state's looking on a statewide level, right? You know, for Eldorado County and EID's service area, it's, it's, you know, water sources, it's, it's different, you know? So they're looking in, in aggregate, but.
Gotcha, thank you.
Part of the reason, if I may, is that's why it's a voluntary 15%.
Jesse, is there, I mean, would it be a likely scenario that things in the rest of the state got so bad that EID was kind of forced to share local water with the rest of the state?
I don't know the, the mechanisms for that, I suppose that, that could happen. Now, the, the, the previous drought was, was pretty intense and historic, and we, that, that didn't, that didn't happen in quite that way.
The, the pre-1914 water rights are fairly sacrosanct in, in terms of property. It would probably take the US Supreme Court to force pre-1914 water right users to have to give up their water for sort of the greater good.
We have a very robust portfolio of water.
Okay. I've got to say, I, I have been up to the mountain lakes recently, and there is more water in there than I have seen in a really long time.
Yeah.
It looks really full. That being said, I mean, I think that, you know, voluntarily doing what you can to conserve is a good thing that we should all.
I think forever and ever we need to practice conservation, but I wanted to ask you Jesse, and I've heard this from quite a few people, we, we were asked to conserve 15% last year and the year be, and so people have really been conserving.
Yeah.
How many more 15%'s are we going to survive?
That's a great question. You know, the, the state kind of dictates, to a large degree, how we, how we ask our, 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 our community to, to, to conserve. And the requirement is currently fulfilled by us asking for a voluntary 15%. Now, like I said, people in our community actually respond to the call, so we see that. And a lot of these things, frankly, and, and many of the things that Mr. Warren said in his, his report are right on. These are sensible things that, that, that most of us can do and, and remember to do, the nighttime, the watering, and so forth and so on. So my, my, I would, I would just say that folks do it and they are, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I could just add a couple of points to that, the state monitors the drought levels statewide, and after, for example, three consecutive years of being in a drought or extreme drought, we start to see these executive orders be published. And the first ones that we're looking right now are primarily addressed at ag, commercial, and then voluntary, right? So ag wells cannot be dug up right now without going through certain approvals. Commercial turf needs to not be watered or not even be planted. And then depending on the level of compliance we receive statewide, on the voluntary measures really forms the governor's and the legislature's opinion on what other measures need to happen. But that's also dependent on the fires that we have. So some of it is in flux and it's not within anyone's control, it's really what's happening overall, but expect to see kind of growing gradations of, of restrictions. One more really quick legal point as to rates. There is a case that was published a couple of years ago out of San Juan Capistrano, and what we cannot do is we cannot have a different price for water rates to incentivize or disincent, disincentivize use. So it cannot be a different water rate for water conservation. The rates that are charged on our customers have to reflect the actual cost of water and the service it takes to, to provide that to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the other, I mean, the other side of that whole conversation in terms of the state mandating other restrictions is they're also not allowing us to build more surface storage. So at the same time, we have a water system built for 20 million people, then we have a population that's going to be hitting 50 million people. And so, you know, you can't conserve, I mean, at some point, conservation is not the only method, although you'll have some people tell you that it is, but there was a reason why the state water project was built the way it was, and it was for the time. And you're even have communities now that are kicking themselves for not getting on it, like people on the coast that don't have any water and can't build anything because they have no water and they can't do D cell as well. The big D cell plant in Newport Beach in Orange County got killed after about 10 years. And so you can't do D cell either. You can't do D cell, you can't build above-ground storage. Below-ground storage is still, science is so-so. And there's that lack of conveyance even from east to west and other things. So all those things together just, you know, puts us all in a really bad spot because we're being asked to do something that the state should be doing, taking a much larger role.
We need to build a big pipeline from the east coast to the west.
It's no joke, I mean, yeah, Washington to, yeah, big, I mean, you talk about the peripheral canal, you could have the, the gigantic water line from Washington down to California.
Mayor, I need to make a correction to a comment I made. Your water purchase actually represents 23% of your Water Enterprise Fund, and 77% would be for distribution, so.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And then just, just to kind of clarify with the comment that our city attorney made in terms of incentivizing, you know, we can't raise rates to incentivize people to conserve, but if it costs us, you know, X amount of dollars to maintain the infrastructure and the rates are too low with conservation measures to sustain that, then that would justify?
Yes, because we're actually paying more for it, correct? Yes.
Okay.
And you do have drought rates that you adopted back in 2018. We've never exercised them, but we do have those if, if our consumption dropped to a point where we had to raise rates.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for, for making yourself available to questions, and I'll go ahead and open this up to the public this time.
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L. And Measure H and Measure L were specifically to help with water sewer and roads. We have done some really good things in this city with Measure H in, in terms of improving our water distribution system. The new Party water line was, has been there for quite some time now, but that was a regular releaser of, uncontrolled release of water from leakage and splitting pipes, and that's now fixed. And our, we were, when Measure H first went in, we were losing more than 25% of our water that we were buying for EID was going straight out into leakage. So nobody was getting any benefit from it. We've reduced that now to, it's less, I think the latest figure we had was something like 12%. So we've cut our, our water leakage in half. And that's one of the reasons why we need to have things like Measure H and Measure L, but those, those have really done some good benefits for the city of Placerville. Personally, I have been conserving water for quite some time. It's been at least three or four years since they first said you should start conserving water. And so I stopped planting the big garden and go to the farmer's market instead, they grow it more efficiently. I have my little raspberry patch, and that's it for, for anything that's gardening-type stuff. I still have a little bit of lawn, and I have some fruit trees. And, you know, shower and stuff like that, but I've already conserved my, more than my 15% several years ago, and it's down to the point where I'm not sure how I can conserve anymore unless I just let everything die. So, you know, the comment was made, okay, how many times can you, can you conserve another 15% and another 15%? I have an automatic sprinkler system, it comes on at 12:45 at night and runs for what I think is the minimum amount of time to keep things alive. And I cannot do any better than that unless I, unless I said, like, I let everything just die. So I'm at the end of what I can do to conserve. And I'm not, I don't think I'm the only one who's in that position. So if it comes down to conserving more than that in the city of Placerville, there isn't a lot I can do.
Thank you Sue.
Kathy Lishman. Sue, get some of the big water users to conserve their 15% and then that'll take care of people who already conserve enough. A few years ago, we let our front lawn die. This, this summer, we let our back lawn die, and I walk across it right now and it crunches. But I got a really nice flyer from the Sacramento Tree Foundation, because even though people are removing trees for fire safety, the trees also provide a shade. My insurance company made me cut down everything within five feet of my house, so I lost all my Japanese maples. But they said, get a five-gallon bucket, drill a hole in it, and set it by a tree, not, anyway, I'll, I'll send the flyer to you. It was very helpful about what to do with young trees, what to do with one year, two year, three year, and just advice about how to keep the trees that you need to still have in your yard alive.
Thank you Kathy. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this and bring it back to the council. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution as recommended.
I'll reluctantly second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call please.
Actually, I'm sorry, so there's a, there's a resolution and then there's two more actions. So are you asking to move the staff's recommended action?
The recommendation, adopt the resolution, and it gives a three.
Okay, okay, thank you, yes.
Is that okay?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
All right, I think we're all good, so roll call please, Regina.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Nell.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item 12.2. Thank you, Jesse, for being here and being available. Appreciate that. Item 12.2, this is to adopt the City Council Governance Handbook. And Mr. Morris has this report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In February of 2021, I hardly believe it's been that long ago, we started this process of developing a governance handbook. We actually finished probably about last October, November. There were some other things we were working on, and one of those I want to point to here in just a minute. But I just want to read the purpose of this handbook that we have developed. The manual outlines practices that build and sustain positive city council relationships. It's a living document that is regularly reviewed and, as needed, revised by the council. The handbook is intended to assist council members in carrying out their roles as well as to provide useful information to prospective council members and other interested citizens. So we went through that process. The reason we haven't adopted that yet is primarily due to the next item on your agenda, which is our strategic plan, because within the governance handbook, it talks about developing a strategic plan and actually had a blank spot in there for our mission, vision, and value statements. So those have now been added into this document, the governance handbook. And at this time, it's ready for your adoption unless there are any other changes or corrections that you want to make. The idea behind this is this is a regular document, as mentioned, we should review and be looking at and following. There are some recommendations for some things in here that we are to do, such as a calendar for you to follow. I am working on that. I've done a little bit of work on that, and I will finish that, that project. Also, there's talk about us having these study sessions or work sessions in addition to council meetings. I've currently scheduled those for every fifth Tuesday during the year, which we normally have four, I believe. So those will be, topics aren't identified yet, but I believe there is one coming up in August. And so we can talk more about that and what we would like to identify as topics and that we can delve into on a more or less formal way, you know, less formal way, and get more information on. So that will be coming. There's also a few other items that you'll see in here that are identified that we can, or kind of action items that we can do immediately and move forward with. And other than that, though, it's primarily for us to go back and review and say when we're acting in a council meeting and the things we're doing, are they in accordance with what we've said we would like to do in our governance handbook? So that's the main purpose of that. So with that, our recommendation is that you adopt this governance handbook. It's not by resolution, we're just adopting it by minute action, which means, makes it a little bit easier if you come back and need to make a change, you can make that without going through a full resolution process. But establishes it as the document that you want to use to govern your actions here on the council. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. Any questions at this point? All right. I'll open this up to the public.
Kathy Lishman, I just have one slight question. You're adopting the governance one first, and then you're doing the strategic plan next. So that if you adopt the mission statement and goals and values that are in the governance, then you have to adopt them in the strategic plan, and then there's no room to make any changes.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. Any other, all right, we'll bring this back to the council and close public comment.
Mayor, I just mentioned quickly, Kathy's correct. If you wanted to postpone this till after you drop, I should have picked up on that and looked at that, but I didn't. So that's my error. But if you want to delay this until after the adoption of the strategic plan, we could re-agenda it.
Or if there's...
Continue it until that point, until after.
Or if there's...
You can open up the second item, too, and hear them contemporaneously.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that as well. So we'll open up 12.3 and hold that item contemporaneously. And I imagine I need to open that up for public comment as well.
Get out the staff presentation.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. So this item, we actually began in November of 2021 to develop a strategic plan. We did this in-house based on, we looked at several examples of other cities. We looked at El Dorado County's example and brought those to the council for consideration. We, on, let's see, May 31st, we held an open house, invited the public to come out and comment on this. We had at that meeting, I want to say, some very good conversations with people that came out to that. Unfortunately, we did not have a big turnout to that, although we did, I believe, Dave, we advertised that in our utility bill, correct? So we did some of the things that we've normally done to try to create more, you know, interest and get people to come out to those. However, we did not get a big turnout to that event, let's put it that way. We have, however, as I mentioned, we've gone through several reiterations of this with the council and looking at what it is. I don't think it's ever going to be perfect. We'll always find, you know, corrections and errors and ways that we could maybe wordsmith this and make it better. But I want to point out a few things. The vision, the mission statement were done by the council in, I think, a couple of meetings that we held, workshops that we held. The city values were also done by the council in terms of taking our current list. If you look on the back wall, the value statements are on the right. Obviously, it's pretty small, we can't see them from here. But it's a very large list, and we wanted to try and kind of combine some of those. And I believe Mayor Taylor and Councilmember Nell did that and put those together. And then I added, I believe, the broad headings to those that you see, to the value statements, to kind of define those a little bit better and put them in categories. So those are the things that have been done. And then the actual strategies that are followed were done in conjunction with kind of council direction. Staff put most of these together based on the overall topics that you identified, which are infrastructure, fiscal stability slash sustainability, health and public safety, maintain and improve quality of life, economic development, and then good governance. I want to mention, if you look at the good governance strategies that are in there, they're primary, in fact, not primary, they're totally from your good governance handbook. That's how we put those in. The economic development strategy is taken from our, the strategy that our PEC committee put together. So those are kind of dupative to that, those two programs, but they were pulled from that. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have. You do have two comments, written comments that were submitted on this, one from Ruth Michelson, which is attached to your agenda, and then the other one from Kathy Lishman, who is also here in the audience tonight.
All right. Thank you. Any questions regarding the strategic plan? All right. I will open this back up to the public.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. One of the things about the governance handbook is that you had a consultant help you do that, but the strategic plan you did not. And the county strategic plan, I know you know, because I've said this in my comments, if you had a chance to read them, that they started with public input. So it seems like much of the focus of the strategic plan is on business and not enough on other important qualities and aspects of the community. How can we retain our natural scenic beauty, small-town values, historic qualities, and sense of community while still sustaining a vibrant economy? One of my concerns is what happens if something comes up that's important, but it's not in the strategic plan? And is the strategic plan, and I saw the staff report that you're, they're going to have to write, is it just busy work for the department heads? Because a lot of the things in the strategic plans, there are six strategic goals, there are 36 strategies, and there are 96 additional tasks. And so I know in the public meeting, the six, the six, whatever they're called, strategic goals were what was around the room for people to see. There was a copy of the plan that they could have taken home. I have to say that I found the flyer that went out on the water bill not very inviting. It was more like a report than inviting people to come to something really important. So I believe there are things that the city can do to get more public input. Two of the very best things that we've done in the past were the general plan and the revitalization project that were immensely involved with the community and a lot of public input. And this plan could have been a way of bringing the community together at this time. Although, when you look at the sense of community part, although there's reference to trails and parks, the plan should state something about the town's natural beauty, our trees, hillsides, and waterways. What I'm telling you is not necessarily in what I sent you already. Those features are what gives our town its charm and sense of place. The natural environment and historic past are so fundamental to Placerville's sense of community, and that's not in the plan. Another thing, it talks about well-kept neighborhoods. Well, what about city property, parking lots, and other public spaces? What about weed abatement? What about doing what we can to make our city more beautiful? That should be part of the strategic plans. One of the goals and strategies to clean up and improve all of the public property around town. City beautification should be a high priority. We need to put our best foot forward for our community and for our visitors. Community pride's motto is to improve the grace and charm of Placerville. Where in the strategic plan is the part about improving the grace and charm of Placerville? Then, under the city value, you have business friendly and economic prosperity. Will they kind of go together? Why are they, why are they two separate ones? Also, I do not believe that the part that says private property rights belongs in there. I just don't believe that. I hope you'll let me talk a little bit more. In your good governance, it says, governance is the act of transforming the needs and desires of the community into policies that direct the city. That should have been part of this plan. The community is not just, I know because I've been on the council, the community is not just your friends or the people you run into on the street or the people that call you, the people that you hear from. The community right now is probably about 11,500 people out there in all of those houses and apartments in our town that we don't even know. And they are an important part of the community. For something this important, you should have hired a consultant and engaged the public in a more meaningful way. And then I had some questions which are in that. But how does the city of Placerville general plan with goals and policies fit in? What makes Placerville unique? What does the city value about Placerville? How can we grow and prosper without compromising our character? How do city beautification, the natural environment, and community character fit in? How much input have employees had in the strategies in addition to department heads?
Kathy, I've given you extra time, but can you please wrap it up?
I'll just finish that last sentence. Will it motivate employees, and will employees view it as desirable? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. For those watching at home, I did give Kathy extra time. She is one of four people in the audience, and I'll extend that to anyone who wishes to speak on this item. I see no one else. So I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Dennis, this was, this strategic plan was kind of your baby, so.
I'll kick it off here. Kathy, thank you very much. Everything you said, I don't agree with or disagree with. All right, I agree and disagree. I really, I don't have an opinion of it too much right now. I really appreciate all the input. I think that all of those are great things to talk about within this, within this and to be considered. That sounded kind of rude and it came out bad. I appreciate what your comments are, and I certainly understand where you're coming from. And I think, I think our staff, given the time, given the pandemic, giving, given the reduction of all sorts of things, we have money now. Last time, we didn't have money. I mean, we really struggled to figure out how to fund the consultant that we did have to help us with the strategic plan or the governance handbook. And I get where you're coming from. And I, and I believe that this is a, that this is a working document, it's a live document, and that, you know, we have, we have done this in the past where it has sat on the shelf, and it's up to us to keep this off the shelf and keep it, keep it live and keep it working. And I do believe that we're going to, the county circles back on an annual basis and goes through these line by line and makes sure that everybody's still in agreement with it, that it is, that it is what we want to, it is what they want to do. And it's actually a process that they have built into their, to their good governance handbook. And, and I believe that this is not the last time that we're going to talk about this. I think it's going to be something that we need to continue to keep working on. I think it's, I think it's a, it's, what does it say? Don't let perfect get in the way of progress, or is that how that goes? Perfection get in the way of progress? And I think that's where we're at. I think, I definitely agree it's not perfect. I agree that we put our, we worked hard on it. I think staff worked hard on it. I think they did a great job getting it to where it's at. And I think at some point in the future, we can work on, you know, building on that foundation which we have right now. And I really appreciate the time that everybody took to do this. It was something that I felt that was important to help, help guide the council, and I'll actually help guide the council, working with staff, to, to maybe reduce, keep us from going down too many rabbit holes, to recognize the limitations we have, to define what's important to us as a city. And, and we can, and that's going to change. And so I think this document should change as well. And this is, this is what we have for now, unless, unless we make changes tonight, and that's, you know, we're totally open for that. And, and so I do appreciate everything that everybody's done to bring this forward to this point. It's been, this is one, I started this before I was mayor. We started, Cleve and I started talking about this, kind of figuring out how we want to do this, and then we brought, Cap, no, not Cap, what's her name? Babs.
Babs.
Babs Kavanaugh. I was there. Babs Kavanaugh.
You're just thinking Supreme Court.
I was, yeah. Well, I got that off. So we brought Babs in, and I think she did a great job of leading us through. And, you know, part of this we did in, on Zoom, which was, which, you know, try to do this on Zoom was challenging. And, and to get all those, to get all the thoughts on the table and to be able to see each other and talk about it, everything was more difficult than Zoom. But we, but we got our way through this, and I think we have a really good product here for what we had to work with and what we did. And I don't disagree with a lot of the things Kathy said. I think they're worthy of consideration as we move forward.
All right. Thank you, Dennis.
It just seems like the strategic plans has become a very popular item. I keep seeing all the, not just us, but so many groups now are, you know, they're working on their strategic plans. So I don't know whether it's something new that has, you know, come forth before people or if it's, they're doing it a yearly, but it didn't sound like to me it's a yearly thing. It's like they're doing one finally, you know, so.
Yeah.
So Cleve, is the idea that we will have, you know, on an annual basis, the governance handbook and the strategic plan will come back to the council for review and reapproval?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Every year, we will, we will review these. I hope the governance handbook is looked at more often than that. But as far as, you know, looking at changes for those, adding additions, once a year during our prior, and kind of in the middle of our budget process is when we hope to achieve that and not, you know, look at it. Yep, absolutely.
Hey, you're doing the calendar, aren't you?
I am. So, and then just to comment, as we plan with this, if the council brings up a new program or a project for us to do, the first thing we're going to say, well, which strategy does that meet?
That's a good idea.
Now, that doesn't mean we won't necessarily say, well, you can say, well, yeah, it may not fit exactly, but we want to do it, and you can tell us to do it, and we will. But that's how we will respond to that.
Consistency is a hobgobbler of small minds.
And a lot of this, a lot of this was, was in place already. We brought a lot of things together that we already had to develop this. And so it was, so... together that we already had to develop this. And so it was, so it wasn't a creation from scratch either.
Yeah. Well, like I say, you know, it would be ideal to always hire a consultant, but, you know, we're a small city, and we have limited resources, and we have to pick and choose, you know, how we spend that money. And so I think we've done the best that we can. I don't disagree that it could use improvements, and we could do more with it. But I'm glad we have something to improve upon rather than have nothing. And so I just say, you know, we'll always take those comments and try to do better and improve it. I mean, we had lists of things that we consolidated, and we tried to improve on already, and we'll just continue to do that.
Yeah. I mean, I like the idea of another workshop next year, you know, and we go through this and try to get more people out, you know, as hopefully, I mean, this has all been in pandemic, like, I mean, we're still in it, but in a sense that we're more open. But I'm hoping that we'll get even more people out to do things. So I-
I think that was a big factor. I really do.
Yeah.
Because people just were not-
It's hard, I mean-
They were not socializing.
I get it. I mean, I've watched a lot of TV the last two years.
It has been very difficult to get public engagement for something like this. I mean, we, you know, the budget, which is really the most important guiding document that the city has, we had no one really, we had, you know, two, two people, I think, the same two people that are sitting on that side of the room, come to those meetings. And it is difficult. I don't disagree that the city could do a better job with outreach and marketing of these things, but that is one of the goals in here that-
And I don't see how, honestly. We, you know-
We don't have the current capacity today to do that, but it is a goal of ours.
I look at transportation and the job that they've done, they, for, I mean, and they're, we're talking the whole county, and they don't get really great turnout unless it's in my neighborhood. That's when everybody's interested. I'm sorry, but that's just kind of the way it is, you know?
There were, oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm babbling on.
There were a couple of specific suggestions that I would be open to entertaining with the, under the city values, under business friendly, ardent supporter of local commerce and property rights. That was something, Jackie, that you and I actually went back and forth about.
Right. We're trying to combine, we're trying to consolidate a long list into something that's more bullet point. Like, nobody reads whole pages worth of stuff. And we were trying to, you know, say, what are these things? Are kind of duplicate that we can kind of put together? And so, yeah, I'm flexible on that as well.
And also with private property rights, you know, a lot of the most controversial decisions that this governing body deals with comes down to private property rights. And it does seem to be, you know, a historic value of the city and the council and the community to honor private property rights, which is why I thought that it should be included. But I'm, you know, I'm open if there's other suggestions on this.
I think, you know, if we want to delve into this, I think that private property rights are a hallmark of this community. There are a lot of rules and regulations that restrict people's private property rights, both federal, state, and local. And I think that it should be always top of mind when we let people know that we also recognize all those restrictions. And you can't put all of that in here because they're supposed to be short words, but that we also value that. Even our own rules have restrictions on what you can do with your business on Main Street, on Broadway, on Placerville Drive, and, you know, how you do your plants and how you do everything else. So at the same time, we recognize that there's still this window that we can help protect your private property rights.
Okay. So it sounds like the consensus is to leave that in. Okay. And then one other suggestion that I completely agree with is under improve, maintain and improve quality of life, we don't have anything that really speaks to beautification. And I think we should. So I would add an eight under maintain and improve quality of life for a strategy to pursue city beautification projects.
Which, what did you, what did you say that you?
When did you? Improve quality of life, I'm suggesting, based on Kathy's feedback, that we add-
Oh, add?
Yeah, that we add eight to address beautification efforts, which I agree is important. And I'm, you know, I'm reading through this. I'm not seeing anything that-
I would think of that.
Really speaks to that.
Yeah, I would be open to that. I mean, yeah, yes.
Were we just gonna say beautification, or do we wanna?
Add a little bit more.
A little bit. Well, I was thinking, like, you know, some of the main points that I heard her say that were kind of resonating with me were the beautification, our community character, and the charm of our town.
Yeah, which I-
It was hard to do, you see, why?
I know. Which it kind of dubbed, I mean, it kind of dovetails a little bit with seven in terms of historical assets, because she, I mean, as was brought up, you know, we, part of the beauty in Placerville is also her, her historical, you know, underpinnings. So having those, actually, seven and eight kind of do complement each other.
What about three, where it talks about encourage and provide space for public art? It could maybe go under that, work with arts and culture?
Five of eight. Or, well, beautification, I think that's like, you know, weeding, weeding little tiny beds of native plants here and there.
Well, and I'm thinking, though, now we've got the baskets.
Or bigger beds, but, you know, just the-
You know, we've got a lot of-
Can I go?
Sorry.
Just one thing for you to consider. If you look at under economic development, number three, it starts talking about community identity, look, feel, character, under that a little bit.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we do talk about our, establish our community areas of uniqueness and interests and-
It's indirect. It doesn't actually talk about, because I-
Well, you couldn't name everything that you want.
Yeah, so if we're gonna put beautification, put it under this, make a C.
Yeah. But I do, I do think that somewhere in this document, we should, you know, make a priority of beautifying the city. Because, you know, over the years, there's been, you know, after 2008, with, there was a lot of deferred maintenance, and there's a lot of beautification that could be done.
And there's a lot of little things that we can do, you know? And the graffiti, like, once or twice a year, it seems like people come through this town, and if, you know, we get that, the faster we get that taken care of, you know, the better.
Yeah.
And just those, you know, there's big things, but it's also the little things that really help.
We could expand on the adopt a spot. I'm not sure that that's, Kathy would know the answer to that, whether we still have it. But we had, we used to have a lot, and it was beautiful. I'm thinking of the fairgrounds, you know, different groups adopt a spot. And I always go around and visit those. It's part of the fair to me. You know, something to encourage public participation and, you know.
Yeah. So Cleve, have we provided enough direction on that one point?
Yeah, I think that my recommendation is that we'll establish one more strategy under, under that, what was it?
Enhance community identity number three.
Yeah, yeah. Strategy number eight, we'll talk about. And I wrote some things down there. Beautification, maintenance of existing parks, trails, and, you know, business districts. I wrote down, you know, community charm, character, make sure graffiti's removed. We'll try to, I can try to meld that into a strategy.
So you're thinking eight under quality of life? I kind of feel like it belongs under quality of life more than economic.
I do, too.
Okay.
Yep. And they could overlap. They both have meetings in both areas, so.
Yeah.
Okay, and then are there-
Does that have to come back there, or what is?
No.
Are we just gonna give, I mean, I don't need to see it again, but I'm just wondering.
I trust you.
You'll see it again at some point, but anyway.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to do that, or do you want to just adopt it with that change? You're gonna do it, and we're gonna- Identify, you know, establish that strategy.
Okay.
And then going back to the handbook, is there any, do we need to do this first? We're doing it concurrently.
I thought Mona said we'd do this first and then go back to the handbook.
You could make a motion to approve both once you've discussed both of them, if you'd like.
Okay.
All right. So no, no other discussion on the governance. Okay. All right. So with that, I would entertain a motion or two.
I would move, it'd be my honor to move, and adopt item 12.2 and 12.3 with the addition of item eight of the, just a second, I got, of the fiscal stability, no.
No.
Quality of life. I pulled up the wrong page. Of the maintain and improve quality of life, item number eight is instructed for city manager, Cleve Morse.
Second. All right. We have a first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Opposed? None? All right, motions, both motions pass unanimously. All right, that brings us to 12.4.
I was excited.
And I see two people in the audience that I think have been waiting the whole night for this item. So I appreciate you sticking through this all and for being here. This item, I'm actually gonna have to recuse myself from because I live in very close proximity to one of these developments, and in theory, I could have a financial interest in the outcome. So I will go back.
Kitchen, you guys calling one? Michael, you're up.
All right, I'll go ahead. So this is item 12.4, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager and/or his designee to submit a loan application for a short-term loan for the Rural Community Assistance Corporation in the amount of $1,540,000 for land acquisition of the Mallard and Middletown affordable projects, and to direct the city manager to return to the city council with the associated loan agreement and any other documentation. And Mr. Revaz has this for us this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, council. The California Department of Housing and Community Development awarded the city a community development block grant fund in the amount of $1,540,000 for the acquisition of real property to offset the costs of constructing both the Mallard apartments and the Middletown apartments, both of these being affordable housing projects. The CDBG award also includes $107,800, which is 7% of the $1.5 million, which will cover the city's administrative costs, including any loan costs and interest. Since the community development block grant funding is a reimbursable program only, HCD will only reimburse the city after the funds have been expended. Therefore, the funding of the land purchased from a third-party owner needs to occur prior to the closing of escrow, prior to the city's request for reimbursement of HCD, since the city itself doesn't have the $1.5 million to loan directly to the project to close escrow. So the Rural Community Development, the Rural Community Assistance Corporation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization located in West Sacramento. And this organization assists with affordable housing projects and makes available short-term loans to cover such financing gaps. So with this, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution, one, authorizing the city manager to submit loan application for the short-term loan from the RCAC in the amount of $1.5 million for land acquisition for both the Mallard and Middletown affordable apartment projects. And then, two, directing staff to return to city council with the associated loan agreement and any other necessary documentation for final consideration and approval. So in other words, we will come back to you once we have, we've been awarded the loan with the documents, so you could see those and make your final approval. So that concludes staff's recommendation. I just want to add that Mr. Chris Westlake is available in the audience. He is formerly with HCD, and he's an expert in all the available community development block funding programs that funnel through HCD, and he's been helping the city with both these affordable housing projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revaz. Is there any questions for staff?
The, and maybe this is for the gentleman out there. There's a, so this is for both of the properties. The timing of this is somewhat critical, and the loan term is only 12 months. Is that, how does that, is all this gonna get, it seems like nothing in these projects moves quickly.
Staff anticipates that we should close escrow within two months, maybe within a month. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be that long. So we've been in discussions with HCD staff, and basically, they're telling us, once everything is, once the city has asked for reimbursement, we're probably looking at anywhere from four to eight weeks in order to get the check for reimbursement.
All right. I'm just, I'm going way back in the way-back time machine, and I'm thinking of like the Melrose bonds and things like that, that we're supposed to, you know, everything was gonna work right. What risks do we have in this? What hiccups could happen in this period of time that would cause this? And have you seen hiccups happen where these don't work?
Good evening.
Welcome back, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Westlake. In all our time, these are basically grants from, through the federal government that pass through the state to the local jurisdictions that don't receive a direct allocation from HUD. And so this, this program that's established right now is for the land acquisition for these two sites. So the only way that RCAC will close on the loan is if the standard agreement's been fully executed between the city and HCD. Once that standard agreement's executed, that's like guaranteed funds. And so there's no risk to the city because any cost for the RCA funds, the one point, and any interest that is, once the funds are expended until they're reimbursed from the state, all that is eligible under the $107,000 of administration dollars through the grant. So there's no general fund hit to the, to the city on that. And it is a short period of time. So the escrow will not close until the standard agreement's been done. RCAC will not fund till that happens. Once that all happens, we'll close the escrow, and then I'll work with Pierre on the funds request to immediately go back to HCD. I work on a lot of different projects, and I get it done usually within about four to six weeks because, as Michael knows, it has to go to the controller's office, and then it comes back. Then they also have to request it from HUD because these are federal funds. So there's a little bit of time. But we've been working closely with HCD on this. They want to get these funds expended because they have expenditure deadlines with HUD to get money spent. And so they want, they got an incentive as well to push it through. So the risk, there's basically no risk because once you have that standard agreement, you have basically a guarantee from the state that you'll get reimbursed. The problem is, it's a reimbursable. We can't just go ask for them to front the money. That would be the easiest, but they don't do it that way. They have to have the receipt that shows that the money's been spent before they'll pay it back. And that's also a requirement from HUD, too.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Westlake? I have, I have one, but go ahead, Jackie.
So much of questions is a frustration about how this money funnels. You know, little towns have to go out and get loans or find money that they don't have to get the money that they want to give us.
Right. And luckily RCA, or luckily, the administration dollars that are generated with these programs are allowed as eligible costs. Besides, like, your staff time, attorney time, any time that you have any, the city spends any time with it, you get reimbursed for all that. So it's not like, you know, we've been working on this thing for like over a year right now in the CBG. So you guys can be able to recapture those staff dollars back to replace on that.
Thank you.
So Chris, I guess might have a more global question. So are we, you know, so this all goes through, and this, and this process moves forward, are we like on our own 30-yard line? Are we on their 20-yard line? Are we close to scoring a, like, where are we in terms of getting from point A to point B? Because I know, I know there's a lot of different funding sources being cobbled together in order to make this thing work, and you kind of, it all has to work in order for it to pencil.
Right. Right.
So I'm just wondering where, where this puts us at this point?
We're very close. Right now, we have, since we have MHP funds, which is a multi-family housing program, funds into the projects, we have the CBG funds, we have the competitive, permanent local housing assistance funds, the CPLHA funds, that we work jointly with the city on getting those, and so the last step is our tax credits. We've done two rounds of tax credits, they have become extremely competitive. I worked with Mr. Morris on some of the issues that we're running into here in Placerville, is because in the scoring through the Tax Credit Allocation Committee, basically, they fund, you've got to have 120 points, which is a maximum. A lot of projects that are not in high or highest resource areas, which is the census tracts, only score 119. So unless you have projects that fall out of that 120 range, the 119 projects barely get any of the funded projects throughout the state. And we've tried to work with SAICOG, and trying to figure out different ways to change that matrix, how they calculate the census tracts for this high and highest resource designation, because basically, it's forcing projects to go into wherever they can find census tracts that are marked that way. But we're very close. We are also, the governor came out with a program late last year called the Accelerator Program, which basically funded, it replaced tax credits for HCD-funded projects that were kind of stuck, like we are. We didn't make it for Tier One last year. Tier Two came out this spring, we applied for both projects, but the way they set the scoring did not favor rural projects, like our projects here at Placerville. Basically funded urban projects that had high density, favored homeless projects, and so the scoring was low, but we've been getting asked some questions right now, so there's possibly some projects have been falling out, so that is another possibility. So between our tax credits and the accelerator program, we are very close to hitting that goal line right now.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I, you know, I know, I think I speak for colleagues, is, you know, if we can be of assistance there, or if this is something we've got to go to like State Senator Dolly, or, you know, Frank, you know, for, at least as our contingency here, but if there's other meetings that have to happen, you know, if this is like a regulatory tweak, or something that could be done by a, you know, somebody at HCD that can make a decision, that might open this up, you know, certainly, whatever we can do to help on that front.
Well, we appreciate that, and like I said, we're very close right now between the accelerator and the tax credits right now, so those are our backup right now to get that, because we could be looking at starting construction either late this year or early 2023 on both, at least one of them, if not both.
How, how much of that is wishful thinking, and how much of that is reality? I'm just real honest.
No, I mean, yeah, because that's all I do, that's my day-to-day job, is this type of funding and for projects, and it's not in the wishful thing, it's in the reality side of this.
You feel, you feel a higher level of confidence in those?
Yeah, because a lot of projects don't have as much layered funds as we have put into this project. Our costs have gone up in the last couple of years, and that's why we've had to constantly go back out and try to put these together, because the construction costs since the pandemic has just escalated everything, and it's still up there, but it's starting to stabilize, but it's, it's still a problem out there. The two gentlemen spoke earlier in the evening about, in the general concept comment, there, I don't understand exactly, because the projects that are funded with state funds require prevailing wage on all the projects. So that actually adds about 30% to our development costs. So when I was at HCD, I funded over $5 billion in projects, every one of them had prevailing wage in them.
Yeah.
And that's a statewide process, so, and these, these projects, these two projects are governed by prevailing wage as well.
I guess to add, to further their question, and I can assume that, too, anything that's government-funded seems to require prevailing wages.
Right.
The, what about the, how you determine, I guess you're, you pick the contractor, contractor picks his employees, and that's the way it goes, I mean, there's, there's not a lot of, you can't require...
We tried to do as much local as we can, either between our engineers, architects, the contractors, or earthwork, we try to do as much as we can locally, but ultimately, when we put these out and try to get a, we're trying to get the lowest bid that we can...
Right.
Because we just don't have an endless checkbook to keep going on to these projects, because they're, we only got so much money into that pool.
Right.
So it makes it tough. You know, I've seen where they try to do local hiring practices in larger cities, and quite frankly, it's, it's very difficult to reach those goals that they set in those, because they come up and talk, but when you actually try to get somebody qualified to come out there and work on the sites, it doesn't work.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for, all right, thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further questions for staff? All right, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments.
Sue Rodman, Placerville, President, and I'm really glad to see these moving forward. So, yay team, keep her going.
Thank you, Sue.
Kathy Lishman, I was very confused reading the staff report, so it was nice to hear an explanation of it. And I have a question that's kind of not connected with this, but how the project gets designed, and does the city have any input on it? And because one of the things about, you know, building affordable housing and building apartments is, you want to build them so that it's a really nice place for the people to live, so I guess my question is, how can that come about?
Thank you, Kathy. And I think I'm pretty, pretty sure that that's the end of public comments, we ran out of people, so I will bring it back to counsel, I don't know if Pierre or Cleve, any comments? I mean, I think on these, as opposed to the Armory one, where we have less kind of say over what the feel is, we do have that ability here, correct?
Yes, that is correct. With respect to the Armory project, the city was afforded elevations and site plans to review and comment on, and city has done that. In fact, we, we found, in fact, I think, we made presentations to you regarding that project, and staff feels that it's definitely in line with our, you know, development guidelines. With respect to these two projects, if you recall, because it's been, been quite a while, staff had come before you, we created a housing, an affordable housing overlay zone, and we applied it to both these projects. The purpose of that was to gain entitlement for both projects, so a developer doesn't have to go through and go through any kind of discretionary project. So staff did the environmental document for both these projects, and we actually garnered, using the development guide, some, some basic, what we would call more or less objective design standards that we will apply to the project, and that was approved as part of the SEQA process. So that's what staff will use whenever we see the elevations come forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I have to say that I had the same concerns as Kathy just mentioned, and I, I remember talking to Pierre about it, and he obviously told me the same thing he just said, but we do have control over what it's going to look like.
Great, all right. Okay, any other comments? We want to entertain a motion.
I'll move that authorize the city manager and his designee to submit a loan application for a short-term loan for the Rural Community Assistance Corporation in the amount of $1,540,000 for land acquisition of Mallard and Middletown Affordable Apartment Projects, and direct city manager to return to the city council with associated loan agreements and any other necessary documentation for final consideration and approval.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, seeing no further comments. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
And Mayor Taylor is recused.
All right, that measure passes. Thank you, and thank you for waiting around for us this evening. Go find those tax credits.
Yep.
Yeah. Welcome back.
All right, thank you, Michael. All right, so we are now on item 13, council reports from other agency meetings. El Dorado Transit Authority, we actually, an ad hoc committee of me and Lori Parlin met and looked over some results of a salary compensation study. Other than that, there was no meeting. And El Dorado County Transportation Commissioner, same, no meeting. LAFCO?
The board provided direction for an EO, and we appointed an alternate public member.
All right.
And I attended that meeting, too. I'm learning a lot, I am telling you, I really am learning a lot, but I didn't realize all that they were involved with, so it's been very, very eye-opening.
All right, SAICOG?
Nothing, we adopted our final budget, but nothing else, really.
Pioneer?
Nothing.
All right. Fire Safety Council?
Actually, you heard Mr. David's report tonight, and that's, that's my report.
The two-by-two has not met, and opportunity knocks.
Nothing. There was a, a emergency meeting, because there was some grant dollars available, and so the board had him meet in order to effectuate those and get that information out.
Okay. All right, city manager and staff reports. Cleve, do you have anything to add?
You have a good question.
Oh, sorry, 14, request for future agenda items.
Yeah, I'll just, I think we're all on the same page here, but I just wanted to reiterate about bringing back the short-term rentals for the rest of the residential area as well, to have that discussion. And I know, I mean, this is like Pierre at the party of one, having to do all this, so I'm not asking for a date on this, I just know that I'd like it to come back, you know, when it's, when possible, and maybe even have some, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I do want it to come back, I don't want it to come back late in two years, but I would like it to come back, I don't know, next six months or something. Maybe that gives enough time, because I also want to be mindful of Pierre, about how much time he's going to need, and what that would entail, and as well as getting the public input, you know, as we move forward on this.
Well, I support the idea of bringing it forward, but Pierre's plate is pretty full, and so to bring it back in six months means you're going to jump ahead of another project. I think that we would need to define what we wanted to put off in order to bring one more new item forward. I can, if we said more like a year, is that more reasonable?
Well, I just want to say that we have quite a backlog of projects that I need to bring forward. For example, the private sewer lateral ordinance, that's very, very important, that's been waiting in the wings, we've got our front yard ordinance, we've got, I've got a whole list, and maybe in the next meeting, I can bring a comprehensive list of the projects that staff is working on. Besides still working with short staff.
Yeah, we can help prioritize that.
Is that too soon to bring your list back, or is that a reasonable...
We have, we have the list prepared.
I can bring a list back at your next meeting, if that's a pleasure of the council. Happy to do so.
That would be good. I mean, really, I mean, I don't think this is something that should take two years to get back on.
Sure.
We have a good, I think we have a good sense of where this is at, so I, I'm not of the opinion that this needs to take, you know, that much extra time to do.
Yeah, staff may, I just want to make another comment on that. I think the first, this first phase that we did was, was rather simple, because it's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with the housing element, it's consistent with our zoning districts. Maybe a little bit different when we go into residential zones, considering we have a newly adopted housing element. I have a concern if it's consistent with the general plan, so we may be looking at general plan amendments and different things, we're going to do an analysis of the impact on housing. The city has an extreme housing shortage, and so there's going to be a lot more analysis, there's going to have to go into it. There's also SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. We were able to exempt the first ordinance, because for the most part, it was staff's, staff felt that basically it was categorical exempt. And so it may be a little bit different, we may have to do a mitigated negative deck and look at more of the impacts that may occur.
I don't know, I disagree with that. I'm sorry, sorry, Pierre, but I disagree with that. I think, I mean, these are standard, SRTs are standard in cities throughout California, there's plenty of best practices to look at, so I like to be able to do that and bring it back.
Well, so the long story short is, is we don't, we're not going to give him a timeline, and if we want to, he's going to come back and give us the list.
Well, I think we have to prioritize that as a city council.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we'll bring back a list of projects, and consider, you know, what type of timelines realistic, and whether or not we want to, you know, reprioritize.
Yep, I think that's, I think it's important just to, you know, we really haven't spent time daylighting project lists of what our individual departments are on. I know you've got whiteboards, and, and I, when I go in your office, I see them every once in a while, but to really, you know, give the community a sense of what, you know, what you're up against, as well as this council, more concrete, I think I really appreciate, I appreciate that, because it gives us context into what you're saying, so, thank you.
Yep. And anything else for future agenda items?
Are you crazy?
Exactly. Okay. All right, 15, city manager report. Cleve, do you have anything?
Nothing.
All right. Upcoming agenda items, I'll, I'll let folks read that at their own, if they so desire. And that brings us to adjournment, it is 8:56. All right, have a good night, and happy Fourth of July.
Yeah.